Order in the court. So, Select Board meeting for January 28, 2020. We're returning from executive session. Let's see. Any announcements or updates from the Select Board?
Sure.
I'll go briefly. I just want to say, a few of us were at the Mass Municipal Association meeting on Saturday, and one of us, Heather Hamilton, presented a session. It was called Riding Into the Future: Innovations in Municipal Transit. It was absolutely full. People were completely engaged. Representative from Livable Streets was there, as well as a transportation planner from Everett, but Heather was moderating this panel. It was absolutely, it was the best panel I went to that entire day, so just kudos to you for putting that together.
Thank you.
Any other?
I've got two announcements. One for a fun announcement. I noticed in the paper this morning that the high school basketball team is ranked number six in the state. So, I think they've got something like 16 wins so far and three losses, so compliments to them.
I took it to number five, didn't say that you joined.
Maybe Mr. Kluckner, I think he's got a couple inches on me. But in any event, it's compliments to them. They've had a good team for a couple of years now, and I try and take in a couple of games every year, so hopefully other members of the board will go and members of the community. I also want to say that nomination papers are available for the May election. They are due, I believe, May, March 17th, and amongst other offices that folks can run for, the Select Board and Town Meeting, School Committee. And I would encourage everybody who's interested to check out the League of Women Voters, who have some information about what it means to be in any of those offices, and to attend a how-to-run-for-office session, which is coming up, sponsored by the League of Women Voters. I also wanted to let folks know what I think has been speculated by some, that I will not be run for reelection. My term ends this May, and I'm going to step aside and let others take the lead. So, there will be a vacancy on this board. So, wanted to make that announcement and encourage people to look at running for office in general. I think we, as a community, are stronger when folks from across different interest groups and across the community step up and participate in the conversation, either in elected office or in other community settings.
That's sad news, Ben, because I had the privilege of working with you for many years, and not only on the Select Board, but on other things. And we'll miss you. We'll miss your energy. We'll miss your insights. We'll miss your dedication. So, anyway, you can change your mind.
Who's going to catch all the alcohol stuff?
Well, I'm not going anywhere quite yet. You're stuck with me for, what, another 14 or 15 weeks of...
And we will get as much of your wisdom out of you in those few weeks as possible.
I won't be shy about sharing my thoughts. I'll let, you decide if it's wisdom or not.
But speaking of the League of Women Voters, it will be held in this room, 7:00 PM next Wednesday, the 5th, and Raoul Fernandez will be a featured speaker.
See how that goes.
Mr. Kluckner, if you wanted to...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to provide the board and the public with an update on the coronavirus that is in the news. I wanted to report that the town of Brookline is monitoring the issues related to the possible spread of the coronavirus, and has issued a press release that appears on the town's website at www.brooklinema.gov. And also, a meeting of the town's emergency management team was convened today, and I wanted to mention or emphasize the following points. The town is carefully monitoring all communications from the federal CDC and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. The immediate risk in the United States is currently low. About 20 U.S. airports are now screening international passengers, including Boston Logan Airport. Unnecessary travel to China is discouraged. Travelers from China should self-monitor and contact medical personnel if they are experiencing flu symptoms. The town's public health department is the local agency in charge, and Dr. Swanjet, Director of Public Health, will be the town's point person to address issues related to the virus. And finally, normal flu precautions, which are typical at this time of year, are also the best defense against the coronavirus, namely handwashing, proper cough and sneeze etiquette, and staying home from worker school when experiencing flu symptoms. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Next, public comments. Anyone from the public like to...
We have, we have one signed up.
One first? Yolanda Rodriguez?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Yolanda Rodriguez. I'm Chair of the Council on Aging.
Yolanda, pull the microphone towards you.
This one? All right. We're usually loud, so tell me if it's too much, okay?
Well, this is for the television.
Is it on?
We want you to be, we want you to appear at your best on TV.
Okay. This is Roberta Winisser, immediate past Chair of the Council on Aging. The Council on Aging would like to go on record that the CDBG consolidated plan include a statement about the older adults in Brookline and their needs. We will be submitting a written statement to this effect. We're here to be sure that the needs of older residents, who make up 20% of the town's population, are noted. Specifically, our goals are to emphasize transportation as a priority need for older adults and make sure that it receives notice. In addition, we also want to be sure that the needs of the center are given attention. The senior center was built with CDBG funds and is currently at capacity. There will be an opportunity to utilize CDBG funds for restructure, expansion, or new construction in the next five years, if this plan is in existence. So finally, we're aware that Frank Caro, on behalf of Brookline Can and the Age Friendly Cities Committee, will also be submitting a written statement for the five-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Saying none. Okay, next. Approval of the following Select Board minutes, January 7, 2020, January 14, 2020. Any edits or corrections to those minutes? No? I sent in a few edits to Kate. So, as amended or as edited, I move approval of the January 7 and January 14, 2020 minutes. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Question of authorization to apply for the fiscal year 20 survey and planning grant for the Linden and Vernon Harris Street Neighborhoods Survey.
Well, I would expect someone from the Preservation Commission or staff, but I don't see them here.
Do we need them to vote? Does anyone have any questions about them? What do you say, Ben?
It seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Okay, I, let's see. Okay, I move...
This is just an application, correct?
Yeah.
For a grant.
Just an application, so...
For a grant.
It's going to have to come back before us, again, for acceptance, so I think applying for money is always welcome, and hopefully we get it and have an opportunity to learn more about this in the future.
Right, especially since it's in my neighborhood. Anyway, I move approval of the application for the fiscal year 20 survey and planning grant for the Linden and Vernon Harris Street Neighborhoods Survey. Mr. Franco, all in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton? Slow down, slow down. Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Question of approving, change order number two for the GMP Guaranteed Maximum Price 12 Early Bid Package Related to the Brookline High School Expansion Project with Skanska USA in the amount of $7,349,790. Mr. Masak?
Yes, Ray Masak from the Building Department. Most of this is for the procurement for the Cypress and STEM building. The statistics for the procurement were 100% for the MBTA station. 111 Cypress were 86% procured. For the STEM wing, we're 88%. And then we have change order two for the early enabling package that we finished this summer. The Building Commission has requested that Skanska finish up the procurement, hopefully by February, latest March, and then we'll transition from procurement to a typical project with change orders.
Great. Any questions? I move approval of change order number two for the GMP 12 Early Bid Package related to the Brookline High School Expansion Project with Skanska USA in the amount of $7,349,790. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, question of approving, amendment number 13, additional structural design services related to the Brookline High School Expansion Project with William Ron Associates in the amount of just $11,000.
During the enabling, yes, Mr. Chairman, Ray Masak, Building Department. When we were demolishing the building this summer, we were creating an opening in the basement, and we actually had the building collapse within the building. It was a pretty significant event for the project. So, these services, as we peeled away the building to see how we could fix the problem, we'd send out the structural engineer, not enough information, and continue to peel away until we had the solution. The solution is now in place, and the last bay that's up will be demolished within the next few weeks. So, this is the additional structural work to come up with the solution to support the building, so additional, so that another collapse would not occur.
So, as I recall, no one was hurt, which is really...
No one was hurt. So, this was a really, it was a significant event, but in the grand scheme of things, right.
I assume that this is not a unique event, so are we doing anything to avoid such events in the future as this project goes forward?
These are, this is like an unknown condition, so we didn't understand how the two buildings, built in the 1940s and 30s, how they, how the construction went to, were put together.
The problem is, we don't really have very good plans from that time of how stuff went together, so, you know.
Moving forward, these unknown conditions have been found, and so we're now moving forward as a typical project.
But this is a relatively minor expenditure, given the problem.
Given the problem, yes, that is correct.
That's scary.
It was scary.
Okay. Any other questions? I move approval of amendment number 13 for additional structural design services related to the Brookline High School Expansion Project with William Ron Associates in the amount of $11,000. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Heller, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And you're still here. And you'll be here for a while. Question of replenishing the capital delivery force account related to work associated with MBTA and the Brookline High School Expansion Project for amendment number three in the amount of $3,278,077.50.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and anytime you work with the MBTA, it's called a force account, and these are for the diversions, flagman, clerk of the works. And basically, this is the lease cost as we were going to piggyback on some of the work that's being done for the Green Line. So, that does capture the piggybacking that's going to take place. So, this covers us all through 2020, where most of the work for the Cypress building will be done.
So, we approved a number of these last year, or earlier this year?
That is, that is correct.
So, no more will be before us, or...
I cannot say that.
Okay.
2021 is a whole different year.
That's true.
We will be back. And I'm not smiling about it. This is a significant expenditure for the project.
Okay, any other questions? I move approval of replenishing the capital delivery force account related to work associated with the MBTA and the Brookline High School Expansion Project for amendment number three in the amount of $3,278,077.50. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Question of awarding a contractor Acme Waterproofing Company for the town of Brookline Water Garage Slab Repair, the amount of $486,760.
Good evening, Mr. Champ, members of the board. Tony Quigley of the Building Department. This is, excuse me, a question before you, as you said, is the award, not the actual contract, award to Acme Waterproofing Company. They were the low bidder. There were four or five bidders. I don't have the whole tabulation sheet with me. But their bid was $486,760 for the base concrete brick, not including alternate one. So, the recommendation is to award to Acme Waterproofing in that amount, not accepting alternate number one, and their firm comes recommended by the design engineer, Desmond Associates. And the basic scope of work is to repair the water garage slab. It's pretty straightforward, we think anyways, because it's deteriorating, and to, at the same time, redo the under slab, the floor is in a serious state of disrepair.
Okay, any questions?
No, I'll just mention that in the past, we have had that sort of list of all the bids, and I think it's like going forward in the future, it's important in the packet for the public to be able to see all the different bids, and this one in context with those. So, if we could, in the future, get those again, that'd be great.
We can, and I will do that, and I will, I actually, I can send it along tomorrow, it'll be after the fact, but I can send it along tomorrow as well, just for everyone's information.
Now, previously, that would have been a real burden on the Select Board, all that paper. But we have stuff electronically now, so we can take it all.
I meant just the listing of numbers.
Yeah, what I would be sending is the one-page bid tabulation. She can send you all the bids if you want. But that is the big stack, but I will send along, it's kind of in my chicken scratch, but I'll send it along.
Thank you.
Okay, I move approval of the awarding a contractor Acme Waterproofing Company for the town of Brookline Water Garage Slab Repairs in the amount of $486,760. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, question of approving a pre-qualification committee to proceed with construction management at risk with the following members, Heather Hamilton, Select Board, Helen Chalupski, School Committee, Kenneth Kaplan, Noting Commission, Lynn Stapleton, Left Field, which is a company, Philip Gray at Jonathan Levy Architects. Mr. Quigley?
Yes, Tony Quigley, Building Department. The thing that's missing in the little description here is that it's for the Driscoll School, which may be evoked to everybody, but I noticed in the write-up, it's not in here. On April, your meeting of April 24th, I believe, of 2019, this board voted to go the route of, or attempt to go the route of seeing him at risk, which is Chapter 149A. So, that's the methodology under which we are proceeding. The, an advertisement has been placed already for this, and the statutory requirements are that the architect and owner's project manager, in this case, Left Field, need to be on that committee. And thankfully, we have the other members of each of the boards who have stepped up and graciously agreed to serve on the committee as well, approved by you folks.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Okay, I move approval of a pre-qualification committee to proceed with construction management at risk with the following members, Heather Hamilton, Helen Chalupski, Kenneth Kaplan, Lynn Stapleton, Philip, and Philip Gray. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Oh, that's it? Okay. Thank you. Question of approving a temporary wine and malt beverages sales license at Alium Market to be held on Sunday, February 26, 2020, for a cheese class from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM at 1330 Beacon Street. Any questions about this?
I just want to clarify, on the cover sheet, it talks about, it says it's on Friday, this Friday, January 31st, so, yeah, I believe the request is for Friday, January 31st. I didn't catch that before, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, I see that in the letter.
Okay, yeah.
Same time, same location, but just a different date. It's Friday.
Well, the letter says 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
This one says 7:00 to 10:00. I don't know, there are applications for 7:00 to 10:00.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Please, as I see, have approved it, or have no reason to oppose it. Any other questions, other than that? I move approval of temporary wine and malt beverages sales license to Alium, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Market, to be held on Sunday, January 31st, for a cheese class from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Question of approving a temporary all kinds beverages sales license to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum to be held on Saturday, February 8, 2020, for an annual member party from 5:30 PM to 10:30 PM at 15 Newton Street. Let's see, got approval from the Police Department. Any questions about this?
It appears to be in order, straightforward.
So, I move approval of the temporary all kinds beverages sales license to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum for February 8, 2020, annual member party. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Question of approving a temporary all kinds beverages non-sales license to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum, again, to be held on Friday, January 31st, 2020, for a holiday party from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM at 15 Newton Street. And does that seem to be in order?
Yeah.
Yes, and the Police Department sees no reason to deny the application.
Okay. Okay, I move approval of temporary all kinds beverages non-sales license to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a holiday party on January 31st. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, next. Authorization to hire, Public Works. Question of authorization to fill the position of motor equipment repair person for the Public Works Department in the Division of Highway and Sanitation, Commissioner Pepesturgen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight, I have three very critical positions in the Public Works Department. Ask your permission to fill. The first one is for a motor equipment repair person, i.e. a mechanic, auto mechanic in the Highway and Sanitation Division. These positions are becoming increasingly more important for us as the complexity of automobiles and motor vehicles becomes very complex and complicated. We've had good luck with filling these positions in the past, although it takes a lot of work to do so. Unfortunately, they're in high demand, and we get a good mechanic, and he's here for a short time, and then gets a better offer somewhere else and moves on. You can't fault them for that. So, we do have a vacancy for a mechanic. This time, the mechanic actually retired as one of our long-term employees. Yeah, he's actually retired, and we wish him well, but we request your permission to fill this vacant position as soon as possible. If you'd like me to go through these one at a time, or I can do them all, whatever your pleasure is.
Why don't we vote for them in a nomadic fashion, but, you know, tell us about all of them?
Okay.
And also, discuss for a second difficulty in actually filling these positions. I mean, you know, there's such an emphasis on college education that many times, the technical skills that these positions represent are overlooked, and, you know, students aren't prepared, aren't encouraged to go into these areas.
Well, that's correct, but I think part of the problem is that historically municipal government is on the lower end of the pay scale for technicians. You know, they can, they can make more money working for a car dealership or a brand new dealership, and we can't compete with that oftentimes. We are taking steps, or are going to be taking steps in the future to work with the union to try to come up with a plan to phase in an upgrade of our motor equipment mechanics to make the positions more attractive across the board. The second position I'd like to talk about is the general foreman in the Parks and Open Space Division. This one is a particular loss to us, the incumbent Evan Tibbetts has received a great opportunity to work closer to his home. He lives down along the southern part of Massachusetts, and he's been offered a position as the, as a supervisory position in the North Attleboro Department of Public Works, which is a significant improvement for him. He was a general foreman for probably five years, was a terrific person to work with, worked well with all of our employees in the Parks and Open Space Division, and he will be sorely missed. But again, when opportunities arise to get a better position elsewhere, you know, we wish him all the best in that endeavor, not to mention the shorter commute, which is not insignificant these days. The final position is one that's near and dear to my heart. It's with mixed emotions that I bring this one to you. Peter Ditto has announced his retirement effective February 7th. He will be leaving after 51 years. Just want to make a note that he's got two months longer time than I have, so we both came here as rookies and pretty much spent our entire career here, working for the citizens of this great town. But Peter's been the director for quite some time now, has worked his way up through the ranks to that position. Again, you know, we wish him well in his retirement. It's going to be a difficult position to fill. You now have two big positions to fill, as you know, in the Public Works Department, so we're wishing you a lot of success with that. But Peter has agreed, as I have, to stay on as a hourly employee for a short time to at least fulfill the duties of the director of the division, you know, while we're hunting for his replacement. So, he's agreed to do that, you know, short-term at least, so we'll make as much use of his time as we can in the interim. So, those are the three positions. I ask your permission to fill them.
Any questions from the board?
The motor equipment repair person, do we require CDL?
Yes, we do.
Could you explain what CDF is?
It's a commercial driver's license, and it is a...
Not everyone in the audience, we know that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a premium. At the state, we could not keep motor equipment repair or operators, because anyone who has a commercial driver's license, they can make easily twice as much work in the private sector.
Yeah, it's because of the nature of equipment that they're servicing, they have to have the ability to legally operate that equipment. So, yes, we require that, and we also require hoisting engineers licenses for them.
Yes. Okay.
Let me just make a remark about Peter Ditto. So, I've worked with him on many, many different projects, and gas leaks, high school issues, going back to, you know, school issues when I was on the school committee, and he's always been very professional and very cordial. And he's always been very professional and very cordial, tried to get, you know, the best deal he could for the town. I think he'll be missed, so I wish him well.
And I'll relay that to him. I tried to get him to come tonight, but being the modest person that he is, he didn't want the accolades, so, but I will pass that along.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I'll just wish Peter my best as well and a happy retirement. And I hope that he knows that we appreciate him for his 51 years of long service and we wish him the best as he gets some time back.
I'll second that. Worked with Peter on a few projects here in town. I agree, he's always been very, very even tempered, one thing, very competent and very helpful, at least in my experience.
I was going to suggest that with Mel's help, that we add something on the calendar that would force his presence here so we can congratulate him in person on his return.
I'll give it a try.
That's the reason.
That's 102 years of service going out the door pretty soon, so.
I'm aware.
So are you looking to make a comment that hopefully related to this? I don't like letting people jump up in comments, but go ahead.
Hi, Steve Vogel, Precinct 5. I think it's always regrettable when valued employees leave who have lots of institutional memory. At the same time, this opens opportunities and I was interested in finding out what Brookline is planning on doing in terms of putting efforts into hiring women and minority employees for these positions.
Well, if you're asked-
Last week, we had a presentation on this from Ambraga Human Relations.
Well, in general, you know, the town does advertise its positions and attempts to advertise in places where women, minorities will see those proactively and that's our goal.
And, you know, we, this board, you know, tries to oversee that and make sure that not only are we going out and looking for a diverse pool, but that we're also successful in getting such a diverse pool as well as recruiting and hiring people from that pool. It's not easy. One of the issues that Ambraga mentioned last week was many candidates refuse to indicate their race or ethnicity, and that's understandable. And it makes it very difficult for us, though, but it's understandable because once they identify themselves as, let's say, African-American, many employees are going to, you know, put them in the revolving file. So, you know, people should understand that we make a very serious and very robust effort in this area. It's not as easy as, you know, snapping our fingers and getting it done. It's very difficult and, you know, our job is to just monitor and make sure that we are doing all we can to accomplish our goals.
And I'll add one thing, correct me if I misremember, but I believe this board requested that the HR director appear quarterly to report on efforts as well as progress in this area, so you should see that on a future board meeting agenda, those quarterly reports.
Okay, so unless there are any other questions or comments? I move approval of authorization to fill the positions of motor equipment repair person, director of engineering and transportation, and general foreman in the Division of Parks and Open Space, the latter. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Steinfeld, authorization to hire, planning. Question of authorization to fill the position of preservation planner for the Department of Planning and Community Development in the Regulatory Division.
Thank you. Alison Steinfeld, planning director. One of our two full-time preservation planners has resigned, is going back to Newton. Laura Kritzer, we will definitely miss her, therefore, before you tonight to request authorization to fill the position.
Any questions? You know, one concern I have is that you, as well as other departments, are terribly understaffed and I'm going to raise that issue later on in the program in terms of, you know, tasks that you're being asked to take on. So I think at some point, you know, we're going to have to deal with the fact that can you do everything we're asking you to do? And I guess my question is, is this going to help or is this just, you know, bringing us back to where we were?
This is not a new position. In full disclosure, we've basically filled the position already pending your approval. Our part-time preservation planner has asked to appoint the full-time and both Polly Selko and I agree that that's certainly an appropriate decision. So I will be back before you in a week or so requesting authorization to fill the part-time position. We have filled-
Why don't you just do it now?
I'm sorry, what?
This is not posted?
It just happened today, so, okay.
Got it.
We have just filled the zoning coordinator position, which leaves us with a vacancy of an economic development long-term planner position. So we're working hard to fill them, but I will tell you, we don't get the same amount of response that I'm used to. It's dwindling over the years, but we'll continue-
Is that a Brookline problem or is that a municipal-wide problem?
My guess is municipal-wide.
Yeah, I think it's related to the economy mostly, competition for positions, but also frankly, has a lot to do with just the difficulty getting around and getting to work and spending so much time in your vehicle. We're losing a lot of people, we find, for logistical reasons.
As a matter of fact, Laura did get a better job in Newton, but it's also closer to her home. She lives in Newton, so that did enter into her decision, the commute. In terms of your question as to whether or not we can do the work, we will certainly do the very best we can. We may at some point request guidance on priorities because we do, will have to make choices.
Asking us to provide, never mind. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I move approval of authorization to fill the position of preservation planner for the Department of Planning and Community Development in the Regulatory Division. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller? She says aye. Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Aye.
You got five votes, not just four.
Thank you very much and I'll see you in a few weeks on another position.
Boards and commission interviews, the following candidates for appointment or reappointment to the boards and commissions, for these boards and commissions will appear for interview. Cannabis mitigation advisory committee, Sam Levine first. Is Mr. Levine here? Apparently not.
No.
Seven forty-five?
I mean, six forty-five. So that's-
Okay, it is Carrie Ann Tester, you're here.
And I'm assuming that I'm going to be doing separate interviews for the two that I'm interviewing for tonight. This isn't one interview for both, since they're different committees, very different.
Yeah, they're different committees, so we have, okay, we'll do that separately if you want. Okay, tell us why you want to be on this commission and a little bit about yourself.
Okay, I think you know a little bit about me, but you got your first glance at my resume when I applied for these committees. I think that I bring, I would bring to the committee, I'm a social worker, so I'm, I'm a good listener. I really try to understand people. I try to, when I'm listening to stories, I have a really high tolerance for complexity and I think that's going to be really important on this committee. These problems are very complex and I think they're going to require complex assessments of the needs and the situation and complex development of complex solutions and approaches. And I even hesitate to call them solutions, it's more like approaches or things we're going to try. This is brand new for all of us. So I have a high tolerance for complexity, I'm a very good listener, I'm very good at, I think, engaging the community and trying to integrate and acknowledge and prioritize all, a good spectrum variety of opinions and perspectives that are not mine necessarily.
Okay, any questions?
And I also am, I'm a data, data person. Love data of all kinds.
So, do you work for the town?
I used to work for the town. I worked for the town from 2015 until a little less than a year ago, I worked at the senior center.
Okay, so you're not a current employee of the town?
On a massive chief, under senior transportation project. No, I'm not a current employee.
Now, one of the criteria for membership on all of our committees is the ability to work as a team and be active contributors to accomplish the purposes of the committee. I'm just reading out of our-
Yep.
So tell me how you would be able to satisfy that criteria on a committee like this, which is going to be very, very-
Very stressful.
Stressful, very, very high, what's the word, high intensity?
Yeah.
High profile.
High profile.
Well, at first it's going to have-
Controversial.
Yeah, yeah. I feel like a lot of my, I feel like over the last several months, a lot of my personal strong emotions have been worked out about this and I've kind of left a lot of things behind, let a lot of things go. I have a much clearer picture of the big picture now.
For example?
For example-
Things you've let go.
Things I've let go. Getting really irritated at seeing cars idling. I used to call the police every time I would see them idling and now I try, just like little things like that where I've tried to become a little less attached to, I have a really overblown sense of justice and right and wrong and I think I'm acknowledging that about myself, so trying to temper that and see the bigger picture and prioritize what can and can't be done, what's more important than other things. There are things that are more important to others. For example, safety when it comes to mixing cars and pedestrians and cyclists is still very important to me, more important than public consumption or litter. So prioritizing those issues, I've gotten kind of a better perspective on that. But that's been my focus from the beginning, but.
Any other?
You mentioned that you've got a data background or data expertise.
Not expertise, I love it. I enjoy it.
So it's in that context that I ask if you've got any thoughts about the process to make decisions about the allocation of funds. There's no shortage of ideas about how the dollar should be spent, but it's a find that resource. So how do you get from those ideas, that list of possibilities, to a final decision?
Sure. I think that data is so, so important. I feel like a lot of the decisions so far have been made on how to spend that money without much data at all, which is very frustrating, but we had no choice because we had no data. So now we have the opportunity to have some of those data and I would, I'd like to expand the scope of the data that we integrate. I think that data worship can be a problem. Some of you probably know that the old saying that like if you torture data long enough, it'll say whatever you want it to say. I really believe that. I also believe, I think we need to balance, I've heard a lot of disparaging of anecdote and I would also encourage people not to make important decisions based on anecdote. I think there's a difference between anecdote and qualitative data, very different. I also think that relying purely on quantitative data is a mistake. Just for fun, I charted the average monthly temperature with the number of public consumption calls based on the police logs. Interesting correlation, I heard another interview for this committee, kind of conflating correlation and causation. That's something we need to watch out for, just because something happens at the same time doesn't mean that one caused the other. Saw a dip in July and August in the calls. Why is that? There's a story there. My hypothesis would be that there are fewer of us around to make those calls. Who knows? We could dig down in there and try to figure that out. I think data's important, but you have to take it with a grain of salt and you have to treat it very carefully and you have to, I think that having a diversity of opinions on the committee would be really helpful for that. And I have a really critical eye towards data, so.
Any other questions?
Just want to ask, you mentioned, and I'm actually glad, of all the folks that have come before us, I think you're the first one to have sort of prioritized this issue of safety and traffic and those things. I think that's really important. You know, I did want to ask, though, also, you sort of mentioned the idea of calling the police when folks are idling and stuff like that.
I call the non-emergency line, not 911. Just to clarify.
Yeah, and I just, you know, I worry about things like police resources and making sure that tasks are on. I'm thinking about, as you think about the issues that most require mitigation, are there things you'd like, you know, already in your mind going into this, you would think, I think we need to do more of this or put more of these types of resources into addressing these issues?
So I think we need to be very clear about what the charge of this committee is and what the possibilities are. I heard another interview, he mentioned something about senior transportation. Obviously, that's not an option for mitigation funds. I think we need to, there are a lot of things that I would like to do that just aren't possible with mitigation funds and I would like to have a magic wand and change all kinds of problems that I don't think you, I just don't think you can change them with mitigation funds. So something I'd like to do with mitigation funds. I think education would be important. I think that developing, maybe like trying to strengthen the sense of community between, I feel like a lot of the customers to these shops are, you know, they swing by Brookline and they swing back out and there's no connection for them. They don't feel welcome. They are here for one reason and then they get out. I'd like to maybe try to kind of mix some education with some community building with those folks. I mean, they're, they're part of our community, so, and also the people who work at the shops. I would like to maybe try to build some connections there. I had this wild, crazy idea about offering spaces in the schools to children or grandchildren of the employees from these shops, but, you know, that's-
Given the level of crowding, you might have a-
Exactly, yeah. I think I'm going to get my head on a pike for that one, bring up the head-on-the-pike metaphor.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm also interested in your experience in data collection and analysis.
Data collection. So as an undergrad, I took, I was kind of a wanderer as an undergrad. I was a chemistry major for a while, computer science for a while, finally landed on English because I wanted to finish and graduate and get out. But I ended up as a technical writer, so I've done software, so I speak tech. Then I, as a, so I took a psychological stats class in undergrad and then in my master's degree, I took two full years of social science research, which involved some pretty heavy stats with SPSS and-
I see.
And I've always been interested in data. I think it's really not a good idea to make decisions without some kind of basis in data.
Okay, thank you.
I'll take this opportunity to say the same thing I've said. I think for the past four weeks that I'd be interested in having this committee look at screening along the fence that runs along White Place.
Heard that, yeah.
You know, it may be a good idea, it may be a bad idea, but I think it's something that this committee should at least have a conversation with.
So I thought, I think that's an interesting point because when I heard, because I listened to both weeks of the interviews for this, and I think you guys brought that up in the first week, after I heard that, I emailed a couple of the people who live on White Place and I said, have you heard anything about this? Has anyone brought this up to you? And they had never heard of it. So I think that's interesting. I think it's a great idea and when I said it, they also thought it was a great idea, but I think that they should have been brought in earlier. It sounds like there have been some movements down that road and I feel like they probably should have been involved. I'm not criticizing, I'm just suggesting.
But some of the residents have discussed the general issue.
Right.
Maybe not specific-
They're very excited about it.
Screening, but, you know, this issue of, you know, how do we sort of obscure the parking lot, you know, from public view for a variety of good and bad reasons-
Yeah.
-has been discussed, so it's not as if this is new.
Not criticizing, I'm not seeing you guys like done anything actionable. It's just when you mentioned it, I think two other people popped up and said, yes, we've been talking about that. And I was just kind of wary that the people who it would directly affect had not heard about it when people who wouldn't be directly affected had. So it was just, just something that I would, that would be important to me to involve people early in the process. I'm a big community engagement fan. I think it's really important to engage the public early.
Well, it's in that, so I've done nothing-
And they are fans, so it's great.
... to pontificate up here, so I think that I view this committee as a, the first step, a form of community engagement.
Absolutely. I think community engagement is going to be critical in this committee.
It was never my intention to stretch any of the neighborhood or-
I didn't think so, yeah, just, it's a new way of working. I mean, thanks to Ms. Brown and her colleague.
I saw Ben screenshotting over there, I don't know.
So another thing they mentioned, so when I talked to him, another thing they mentioned was that it might help with the people who stop at the fence to look down at the line and talk about the line. It would help in all kinds of ways, so I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so we will develop or have a process to select final members of the committee and we'll be in touch with you at that point.
All right, and I'll hang out for Brookline Village parking.
Okay, Sam Levine.
Hello.
Tell us about yourself and why you want to be on this committee.
I've got some ideas.
I've got some ideas. Let me start by saying apologizing for not being here when you called me earlier.
No, we were, we were early. Don't worry about that.
Excellent. My name is Sam Levine. I live at 15 White Place. I'd like to be considered to become a voting member of the Cannabis Mitigation Advisory Committee, based on my being a close neighbor of Neta. Let me start by saying it's nice to be here in front of you to focus on productive solutions. There are several perspectives and skill sets that I could bring to the committee. First is a set of analytical skills. I have a bachelor's and master's in computer science from MIT and an MBA from the MIT Sloan School. I've used those skills in various governance roles from being the undergraduate president of CBT, the MIT fraternity at 58 Manchester Road in Brookline, a board of trustees, member of that organization for many years, and previously chair of the Budget and Finance Committee and a board member at Temple Israel Boston. Professionally, I am a data analyst and business consultant and the COO of a tech startup based here in Brookline. Second is an appreciation for innovative thinking. The successful integration of retail cannabis into the fabric of Brookline will require innovative solutions. Like our Trader Joe's, our cannabis retailers are the largest businesses of their types in the country. Being able to appreciate the concerns and needs of many different community groups, working cooperatively to develop innovative solutions, is going to be key to being a contributing member of the committee and for the committee to have a successful outcome for our town. During the recent votes on townwide initiatives and Neta's license renewal, I spoke to public gatherings, town meetings and select board sessions. And I am neither willfully blind nor a pro marijuana fanatic. Instead, I characterize myself as a member of my neighborhood who personally observed and still observe a reality different from what many were categorizing as an urgent crisis. Getting involved and speaking was a painful experience with jaw-dropping charges of lying, bullying, racism and hidden agendas leveled at people from all sides, not just me. But now it's time to get past personal passions and focus on solutions for the greater good. For me, I commit to reaching out with goodwill and a focus on objectively improving the issues we face. From a plan perspective, I'd suggest that the committee first identify the issues that need to be mitigated and prioritize them. An initial set might include traffic, parking, customer waiting, rideshare pickups and drop-offs, local business impact, litter, public urination and public consumption. For each of these issues, the CMAC could establish ways to objectively determine the severity of the problem and identify criteria for success. To help improve these issues, we should evaluate ideas from other places in the country as well as new Brookline-specific ideas. Test, measure and repeat. I believe the CMAC should also have a social and educational role, helping people, especially teenagers, understand the impact of cannabis usage, illegal and legal. As one example, let's take the issue of public urination, which I have never personally seen on my street. But do people who are making the decision to urinate in public know that is a sexual offense if they are committed, if they are convicted of public urination? If not, what are the methods to educate them so they can understand the impact of living life with, with a sexual offense on your record? Is there further, is there a way to improve an issue like that with other public benefits? So for example, Emerson Garden and its children's playground is at the end of White Place and it's a hugely popular gathering place with no public restrooms. Expanding, expansive thinking about issues like that could reduce the impact of public urination and have benefits for the public space for everyone in the neighborhood. I've lived in Brookline almost my entire life. I love our town. I recognize that Brookline is changing in many ways. I would be honored to serve on this committee to do whatever I can to help it face and improve this new set of challenges in innovative and sensitive and positive ways. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. By the way, we have not agreed that CMAC is the acronym of this committee.
Okay.
Just kidding, just kidding. Yes, Ms. Helen.
I'd like to ask him a quick question first.
Okay.
Sorry, I have to leave. I have to go downstairs for nothing. I'd like just to ask you, I know that you did speak in public about these issues and you, you didn't seem to feel that there were problems. And so what is it that you see that needs mitigating?
What do I see that needs to be improved?
You didn't feel, you didn't feel that there were problems, what do you, or issues, what do you see needs to be mitigated?
Right, so, so, yeah, so from my personal observations, I've only seen a couple of pieces of litter from Neta. I've seen obviously, or not obviously, but I've seen some public consumption. I've never seen issues like, I've seen traffic, parking issues.
So there are issues that you believe need mitigation?
So, but it's not just about what I personally observed, right? It's about the impact on the neighborhood. So I, I'm acknowledging that other people have seen issues like public nation with pictures. And if that is an issue that's occurring, what can we do to address and improve that issue? So it's not just based on my personal observations, but it's based on what people in, in the neighborhood have observed and consider to be a problem.
Any other questions? Let me ask you the question I ask everyone. Tell me how you would be able to work as a team and be active contributor to accomplish the purposes of this committee, straight out of our boards and commissions.
Yeah.
Criteria.
So I, I think what I would bring to the committee is an approach that focuses on identifying and solving the problem. So as I proposed in the process of what are the issues, how, let's rank order the issues. You know, what are the most important issues to, to address first? And then, so that's sort of a cooperative, everybody in the committee can get input on what the issues are and talk about them and try to help prioritize them along with input from neighbors and, and other, other interest groups in Brookline. And then a specific process to say, okay, for each of those issues, how do we measure it? How do we know how bad the problem is? How do we know when we've succeeded in addressing the problem? How do we know when we solve the problem? And then what are some approaches to solving the problem, which is another, you know, committee, many people on the committee bringing ideas and inputs from studying other places in the country where these problems exist, bringing them back to Brookline and saying, how do they apply here? So it's, it's, it's really, it's a focus on solving the problems with processes. And I think, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I would say that I'm not emotional about this. I'm really focused on improving the perceived issues around cannabis usage for my neighborhood in Brookline.
Any other questions?
How would you work with the neighborhood in order to get, I guess, this community buy-in?
That's a good question. I, I think that as a committee, that we have a responsibility for listening to all the different stakeholders who are involved in the process. So the key, the key goal of the committee is improving the impact, reducing the impact of these large retail establishments on our neighborhoods, right? So, so clearly, public, neighborhood impact has got to be a key aspect of prioritizing the issues we face and recognizing whether or not we're being successful. I think that has to happen with some form of, of, of community input into the, the processes of the committee. So both to help prioritize, help to enumerate the issues, prioritize the issues and acknowledge that we're making progress for solving the issues. It's got to be, it's got to be community input.
Okay, any other questions?
No questions about the screening, the.
Are you for or against?
I don't know. I'm, I'm uncertain. So the lines don't affect me, like when I drive down the street and I see there's a long line or I see there's no line. You know, it doesn't have any impact on me. It doesn't, doesn't offend me or bother me. I want to know about, do I feel like then I'd be entering a tunnel when I entered White Place? So I think there's things to be considered both ways on, on issue, on a, on a solution like that. Good solution. Let's put it in the hopper and see where, see what, what happens.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will be making a decision on a membership on this committee in the future.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next, Brookline Village Parking Benefit District Advisory Board. Carrie Anne Tester again. So tell us why you want to be on this committee.
This committee, so.
And which one you prefer?
If I had to choose, I would choose this one, just because I'm working with the High Street Hill Neighborhood Association to kind of, we're actually holding an event to like get all the neighbors together, what are you seeing just related to parking and traffic? Not Neta-specific, neighborhood-specific parking and traffic, right? So we're kind of going to try to get a picture of what everyone's seeing and try to do some community engagement on developing a solution to, that, that would work for our neighborhood that we could bring to the transportation board maybe, or bring to some other, you know, wherever it needs to be brought. So if we're going to work on something in our neighborhood, that's almost certainly going to have an effect on Brookline Village and the small businesses there. And my neighbors, as I've been talking to them, have expressed a deep, deep concern for the small businesses in Brookline Village, as I do. I love the, the small businesses there. You might know, already be familiar that during the warrant article process, I went door-to-door to every single business in Brookline Village and asked them to sign something in support of warrant articles. So I got to know a lot of people through that process, got to meet a lot of business owners who I had not met before, a lot of businesses that I would never go into in my day-to-day life. I got a real appreciation for the shocking number of business owners who, for whom English is not their first language. I have an English as a second language teaching certificate. I've did that as a living for years. So I have a pretty intimate appreciation of that, yeah, particular issue. And I think that there are some really creative ways that Brookline could be a, we're, we're a good scale and a good size where we could try some kind of maybe, not risky, but different things that haven't been tried somewhere else. Or kind of taking little bits from things that have been tried elsewhere and, and just give it a try and see how it goes. I think, I love pilots. I love trying things out and seeing if they work. Well-thought-out, well-developed pilots. So I think in conjunction with what's happening in my neighborhood, White Place might be working on something of their own. Boylston Street's a totally different picture and it's Mastio Tio, not Town Brookline. So those are three very different streets and then you've got the village. So I feel like this is all going to kind of come together and work together. So I almost feel like I'll already be doing this kind of work anyway in my neighborhood, so, and I'd love to be connected to the business aspect.
Any other questions?
Do you think we can incentivize people to get out of their cars and come to Brookline Village?
I hope so. And I mean, as someone who is not a huge fan of cars, I always kind of have to, again, this goes back to my appreciation for other people's perspectives and priorities that are not mine. When I hear, I get my hair cut at Arena Hair Salon in the village and she is despondent about losing customers because she said they drive for 45 minutes an hour looking for parking and they can't find it, so she's losing business, right? My first response is, well, maybe they could take the T. Maybe they could like, you know, park a little further out and walk in and go to a coffee shop while they're getting their, you know, waiting to get their haircut. I think we have to, not everybody's there yet and we have to have sympathy for these local businesses. I think that even though I don't drive to them, I know that there are lots of people who do and I know they rely heavily on people who drive there. And that's going to change slowly over time, I think, as we, as a town, more strongly discourage coming here by car and more strongly encourage coming here other ways. But it's just going to take time and in the interim, we've got to do what we can to adapt.
We don't want to discourage those customers.
Exactly.
Who don't live on a T-line.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's not an option. You can't just take away the parking and not give people options.
And, and you can't take away that opportunity for a business to grow.
Yeah.
Beyond just, you know, the neighbors in the immediate area.
Exactly. Yeah, well, like Lamora, I would jump off a bridge if Lamora closed. I love that place. But when we, if we restrict parking on Walnut Street, you know, that, that hits Lamora. So, and it was great when liner tire was available to them, but that's not been an option for them lately. So it's, these are, again, complex problems and they're going to require complex assessments, complex solutions and a variety of perspectives and expertise.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Same thing, how about this committee? Daniel Deloma. So tell me who you are, a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on this committee.
Absolutely. So as you said, my name is Daniel Deloma. I'm the managing director of the Puppet Showplace Theater on Station Street. I have been since August of this year. So I am relatively new to Brookline Village. However, I am very interested in becoming more involved in the town and specifically issues that affect us at Puppet Showplace Theater. So one of the things that we started was the Brookline Village Business Association. Our artistic director, Roxy, was a big player in starting that sort of ad hoc group of village business owners and nonprofit leader to come together to talk about issues like this. And so to have a representative on a more official committee would be very beneficial. As well, I am the newly elected sort of leader of another ad hoc committee, the Brookline Nonprofit Association. And their nonprofit leaders come together once a month to again discuss issues facing not only Brookline Village nonprofits, but Brookline as a whole nonprofits. And one of the biggest issues is parking. So for us as Puppet Showplace Theater specifically, we have a lot of families that drive in because with kids, it's very difficult to take public transportation and that's one thing we've learned. And these families spend time looking for parking, as, as my fellow candidate said. And then they also are interested in knowing what happens once they park. We get a lot of questions as to what happens to the money we put in meters. So to be able to answer that question and say that I am involved in figuring out what exactly that solution is, would be not only beneficial to our organization, but I feel to the town as a whole.
Just to query a little bit deeper into something you said, that parking is an issue and you scoped out a little bit what it means from the consumer perspective, your clients.
Yes.
Do you feel that pressure on the employee side as well?
I do. One of the most common questions we get, we run shows from Thursday through Sunday every week. And one of the most common questions we get is where do we park? Or we, in fact, we have to start most of our shows late because people will call, at least five groups, so to speak. Five families will call and say, we're looking for parking. We're coming, please don't give away our tickets, we're looking. And so that generally delays our performances 10 to 15 minutes every, every day, and that's two performances a day. So that has become a major issue for us. And again, when we do recommend public transportation, it's, well, you know, I have three kids and oh, I can't make that work or whatever the case may be. And usually the Kent Street lot, which is the lot immediately behind our facility is filled. And of course, Station Street in front of the station is usually completely full as well. So it does become a larger issue. And that's also something I hear at the Village Business Association as well as the Nonprofit Association, where every meeting is always looking for some solutions.
Long-term, what ideas do you have for fixing that? Long-term and, you know, without any restriction on their thinking?
Sure. I, one of the thoughts that comes to mind most often is somehow allocating certain spaces. So I know that we are actually a big user of those spaces. When you have 50, 60 families coming into a performance, that's 50, 60 spots that are going just to Puppet Showplace. So even if it means businesses are somehow supplementing that parking. If we were to say, in whatever the structure would look like, rent spaces from the town so that we could say on Thursday mornings, hey, these spaces, go to Puppet Showplace, people pay as they are supposed to. But then the town is benefiting from this additional source of income. Our business is benefiting from not having to start performances late and having people feel confident that they will find parking. Or particularly the handicap parking is an issue as well. People who are coming with mobility assist devices have trouble finding that. So finding a way to allocate spots in front of local businesses that have a larger base of people who need mobility assistance, which is something that I've been trying since I started in July in this role and then officially took over in August, trying to work out with the town, even getting a curb cut in front of our space rather than at the end of the streets, is something very difficult. So having those spots allocated to handicap parking is something bigger too. And though that does take spots away, it could be something that groups work together and this commission can work together to figure out how we could share those spaces. So if Puppet Showplace has spaces with HG Studio, which is an expert to us, and when one is using them, the other can, et cetera.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Like I said, we'll be deciding on membership at some future date.
Thank you.
Naming Commission, Pam Roberts. Please step up and tell us who you are and why you want to be on this committee.
Thank you. Pam Roberts. Let's see. Devotion parent, then just the very end Coolidge Corner School parent for 20 years. Three things happened in 2018. Just as the devotion building committee work was coming to an end, I was a member. Just as the devotion building committee work was coming to an end, and I was a member of that committee, and it was really wonderful to see everything come to a head, and my daughter was graduating from the eighth grade. And then the name came forward to town meeting to change the name, to have the Edward Devotion name taken off, which led to fascinating and positive conversations in my household with my 14-year-old and my two 20-something sons, all graduates of the school. At the same time, the school committee realized it needed to look into all the other school names. Let's get something going. So they formed an ad hoc committee, of which I've been a member, and our work isn't quite done yet. We're, we're pretty much done, but we needed to look into all the school names. You know, tell us about Michael Driscoll. Was there anything about him we should know? Tell us about, you know, Heath Road and the families on the Heath Road and, and stuff. So anyway, like I said, we're not quite done there yet, but that has led to a fascinating process in looking at names. What does a name mean? As I said in my application right there, Said Ola, who I respect incredibly at the Ridley School, said to me, you know, maybe we should look at an institutional name every 75 years. What does it mean? Is the name still appropriate? Because otherwise, we become too attached to the name and not the people and not the, the values of the institution. So, and I'm a process person, so I have been really fascinated with this. So I'm still a volunteer in the library at the school, and through that, got very excited with the whole looking for a new name process last year. Neither of my names that I submitted made the finals, but that's okay. I'm okay, I can deal, I can deal with that. But I attended most of the information sessions in the fall, and I just found them fascinating. I thought that what the committee went through was, was a positive experience, and the input from the town and hearing what they went through, I just, I just, I loved the whole thing. So when I heard, and, and then watching the final meeting with the naming committee, it kind of all came together in a head, and I was proud of everyone on both sides. So, and I'm thrilled with the name Florida Rough and Ridley. You know, my, just as an aside, my, my grandmothers couldn't vote until they were 38 and 42 years old. They were both born in the 1800s. So to know that she was an early suffragist in Brookline means a lot to me. Anyway, so that's why I'm here, because I heard that a space was opening up on that committee, and I just think it would be a lot of fun. What does this mean when we attach a name to something? Does it coming from the heart, or is it coming from the head? And you got to meet somewhere in between.
Okay.
Go ahead, ask me a question.
So you nodded to, to a question that I've asked of candidates for this
Okay.
this commission previously, and that's, what role do you see the naming commission having to proactively suggest names of facilities or the renaming of facilities? Historically, the naming commission has been more reactive to the voters.
Yes, yes. Well, that's a good question. I guess if there hasn't been a process yet, we'll have to come up with one, and that could be exciting. I mean, I know that there are parameters that need to be looked at, especially, we went over them when we were looking at the school, like if the person was an employee, how long they had to work there, did the person live in Brookline, et cetera, et cetera. And I assume that there are similar parameters for naming of institutions or street corners or parks, but maybe those can get changed, you know? Maybe you can have a Michelle Obama park, I don't know. That would be something, I guess, the committee would need to meet, and you would have to come up with rules that everybody would agree with. You know, naming, naming is never going to make everybody happy because we always have our own ideas about what a name should be. And they, and they can be politically fraught. We need to make sure that we're not offending when we're trying to actually honor. But I'd like to be part of, part of that process.
So that's, that's more a question of criteria
Yes, yes.
for me. My question is more, if you see a town facility or a town property that doesn't have a name, let's use that example.
Yeah, okay.
What role do you think the naming commission has in saying, we think that person X is really worthy of having a facility named after them, and we're going to start the process and make a proactive proposal that that happen? As opposed to what's happened in the past is waiting for a member of the public to say, you know what, person X really deserves this, and we're coming to the naming commission to say, please name this facility or this property after the individual.
I see. So you're, if I get this right, you're basically saying, rather than wait for someone to come to, with us a name, and then we don't want to disappoint them, we need to come with names. That's actually pretty exciting. I mean, you have, there's a whole world of people in, just in Brookline, who can be honored, both past and, and present and future. I think that I could start coming up with my own list right now, if you wanted me. I mean, I'm not going to tell you, but I think that there's plenty of people who could be honored, men, women. We, we, we have so many different, I mean, the schools themselves are not named for the melting pot that Brookline is, both socioeconomic, faith-wise, ethnic heritage, country of origin, and, and that would be really neat to start seeing those represented. So, thank you, that's a great idea. Cambridge does that well. I don't know how Cambridge names their schools, but I could look into that.
I'll just, I'd say I appreciate the lens that you're looking through. I think so many of the previous naming conversations here and elsewhere have been about, is, is the person that something is currently named after a good or bad person?
Yeah.
And going back in time and trying to, trying to sort of figure that out
Right.
versus understanding that, that the places that currently have names, which is almost everywhere, right? Streets are all named in one way or another. Sometimes they're named Oak Street or something like that, right? But, but many of these places are named after people that the folks who made those decisions had the privilege, the power to do so, and also had biases, and, you know, there, there are too few places named after women, for instance.
Yeah.
Buildings, streets, et cetera. And so I'm just, I'm thinking, I'm wondering, like, how you think that process through and think about sort of community reaction to wanting to rename something, not, not to, not to unnamed someone, but to, to start to, you talked about unearthing these names that, of people that, that should be recognized
Yeah.
but have not yet been, and what you think about in terms of community process and working that, that through with the community that might be resistant to, to this process?
Well, you know, I think that the whole Dudley Square issue is pretty interesting because Boston was given a vote, and most of the Bo, the Boston districts outside of, of, around Dudley Square said, no, I'll leave it there. But I think that the mayor's, it was the mayor's office, right, who said, no, these Nubian Square is, is what the residents want, and we're going to honor that. I just think that's a, that was a brilliant move on his part because a neighbor, a neighborhood has a right to the name of its, that helps make it a community. You know, if you're going to name something, if you're going to name a square, what the neighbors say is really, really pretty important, I think. I don't know if I answered your question. You're asking me about process, and I
I think maybe I'm asking you to think a little too far ahead right now
Yeah, that's okay.
for these purposes, but
If you give me 10 minutes, I could come up.
No, 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 no. Maybe something I, I encourage you in, in speaking
Yeah.
sort of loudly to the, to the committee to think about is
Yeah.
is engaging in a real pro-social process with community that, that actually helps folks recognize that it's, it's not about this person versus that person, but it's about the fact that there are people who deserve to be recognized, but for a variety of reasons, had, never had been.
Right.
And that, and that are, that have deep connections to Brookline, or that, that, you know, that, that match the, our modern-day values that, that we'd want to have recognized in some meaningful way here.
Absolutely. One of the criticisms I had heard in the past about the naming committee is what, was that they were a little too reactive and maybe conservative in how far they were going to go with names, and I can be a little flamboyant, so. And, but, Carol, right? Yes. So, anyway.
Thank you.
I try to use my head, so, anyway, thank you.
Wait a minute, before you go, any other questions?
Sorry.
You haven't been dismissed, and you cannot, you cannot get, cannot get help from the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have five minutes to our next hearing, and since we don't like to start the hearing early.
I could take up the appointments under number
Yeah, under number 20.
Under number 20, if you'd like. Or, I'll wait for a second.
We've got the votes, right?
Yeah, we have a quorum.
There's no controversy about this particular commission. So this relates to the Brookline Commission for Women, which has four vacancies. And so we have interviewed one individual to fill one of those vacancies, Minokshi Garodia, last, I believe, last week. There was also a question of whether we had made reappointments, and I, I've determined that we have, including Gloria Rudish, Felina Robinson, Adasa Margolis, and Elizabeth Stillman were all reappointed by this board on September 17th, 19. So I think there was some confusion about that, but they have been reappointed. So at this point in time, I would put up the candidacy of Minokshi Garodia for a term to expire, I would say, in, we're trying to make these as staggered as possible, I would say 2021.
Any objections to that? Okay, call a roll. Or whatever you do.
Say the name, and then we'll say.
I'm going to say the name, and if you would indicate your support by saying aye, Minokshi Garodia.
Aye.
It's unanimous. You don't want to take up your budget objectives at this point, do you?
That's within five minutes.
I think so.
I mean, we can just go over. What do other people want to do?
I think it's going to take more than five minutes.
Okay. Well, we would take a break, but we only have four minutes to waste here.
I think it's, it is approximately 7:30.
Okay, it is approximately 7:30. So, Brookline, Five-Year Consolidated Plan, Presentation for Department of Planning and Community Development on the Town of Brookline's Five-Year Consolidated Plan related to the federal grant opportunities, including the Community Development Block Grant and home funds from Department of Housing and Urban Development. And before you start, we will not call this the CON Plan. Where did that come from?
A term from the, the folks who, who draft and utilize these plans in our job. It's just a
It sounds really bad. And HUD's website doesn't use that, so far as I can tell.
I think it's just a, a term for people who are in the industry. I don't, I don't, I've always heard it called, called the CON Plan.
CON Plan refers to a terrorism monitoring plan the federal government, so.
I agree with you on that.
You learn something new every day.
Okay.
Okay to go? So as our memo to the board notes, community planning staff, we're in the process of creating the town's five-year consolidated plan.
Mr. Viola, could you introduce yourself first?
I'm sorry. Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning. As I mentioned, we're in the, we're in the process of creating this plan. This public hearing is the first of two public hearings that were required to hold over the course of this plan development process. I'd like to provide an overview of the process we undertake to complete the plan, talk briefly about some of the findings gleaned from our meeting with community partners, and also to give an overview of next steps before the board comments or we receive additional public comment this evening. As the board knows, the CDBG program is a federal, flexible federal grant program that provides grantees with funding to address a wide range of community development needs. In past years, the town's used funding for public and nonprofit housing rehabilitation, such as project done by Pine Street Inn at Beale Street, and for a number of capital improvement projects done by the Brookline Housing Authority at developments townwide. We've used it for, in limited instances, for affordable housing development or limited eligible uses, such as site or building acquisition. Recent examples of those projects are Beale Street, or, excuse me, Beale Street Project, as well as the Two Life Communities Project on Harvard Street. It's an example of where we were able to use acquisition funds. Public facilities, such as the Senior Center, we've done renovations with the Senior Center. We've done renovations in conjunction with parks and open space at the Brookline Avenue Playground, and we've done public infrastructure projects, such as Gateway East. Many aspects of that project were eligible for, for an infusion of CDBG funding, and as well as for projects such as the Emerald Necklace Crossing. And obviously, public services, whether it's Steps to Success, the Brookline Center for Community Mental Health, we, we're able to fund a, a number of widely utilized public services every year. Just some examples of some CD-sponsored projects that have happened over the past five-year consolidated plan process. As I mentioned, the Beale Street Project, a great project, we were able to assist Pine Street Inn with not only acquiring two lodging houses, but doing a complete gut rehab in order for them to be able to create 31 enhanced SRO units, single-room occupancy units, that home, that housed formerly homeless individuals. We were able to use it, again, sort of as a precursor to the Gateway East Project, the Emerald Necklace Crossing Project, which helped to solve a, a local and regional accessibility need in an eligible area. The Route 9 corridor is an area where we tried to funnel our CDBG funding. As well, it provided a, a continuous crossing from Olmstead Park and the Riverway, which was a, a link of, an unconnected link in the Emerald Necklace. And I also mentioned the Parks and Open Spaces Project at Brookline Avenue Playground, a great project. They were able to incorporate accessible play structures as part of their overall improvements. So why do we have to do a consolidated plan? We have to complete it in order to continue to receive our CDBG and home funding. We submit it to the Housing, Department of Housing and Urban Development every five years. Some communities do it on a, a shorter term, three-year cycle. Five years has, has been the way Brookline is undertaking this process, as long as I've been in here and, and previously, previous to my employment. So when completed, the CON Plan, it sets the groundwork for the next set of projects, similar to the ones I just reviewed with you. And as importantly, the plan prompts the town to reassess the needs of some of its most vulnerable residents, including many low and moderate income individuals, families. It provides an opportunity for the community to have input on CDBG funding priorities. And once the plan is complete, it serves as a strategic plan to address community needs using our federal resources over the next five-year timeframe. If you want to think about the CON Plan, think of, think of it as a broad, all-encompassing plan that sets the goals, and that acts as a, a guiding document for allocations made under our, our annual action plans, annual action plans that we, we do a programming process for and ask for your approval every year. It all feeds off of the CON Plan that we create every five years. Community needs. So how do we determine what the community needs are? A lot of number crunching, looking at census and American Community Survey data, housing market data, local and regional plans, and other sources to, to glean information that we need to, to create the plan. As important, for this time around, creating this plan, we need a lot of public outreach. We did a community survey, widely broadcast, and we tried to get as, as many individuals to respond as possible to get a, a good amount of feedback on what the community's needs and priorities are. And I'm happy to report we got over 470 responses, which isn't too bad. And I'm happy to report we got over 470 responses, which isn't too bad. Community discussions, I'm using an example as Brookline Town Day. For the past two years, we've appeared at Brookline Town Day. We've tried to have face-to-face, one-on-one conversations with residents to get their feedback on what the town's funding priority should be. As our memo to the board noted, we met with over 20 organizations, departments, programs, and committees, specifically to gain their perspectives on a wide array of topics and their areas of expertise, whether it's public services, affordable housing development, what have you. And finally, opportunities like this, a public hearing or other public meetings. We're holding this public, we asked the board to hold this public hearing at this strategic point in the plan development process, because we just released the draft of the plan, and we really want to get out front and to let the public and the board know that it's out there, and we're looking for feedback in order to finalize our plan. We took advantage of other meetings with Housing Advisory Board, the Commission on Disability, and other community partners to not only take advantage of their feedback at their own public meeting, but also hear from public who were in attendance. So we've really done our best to get out there and to hear from the community about what the town's needs are. This looks like a daunting list. I'll go through it fairly quickly. After meeting with community partners, like the Housing Advisory Board, regional partners such as Mass Housing Partnership, Brookline Housing Authority, to the surprise of no one, there's a real need for affordable housing, not only in Brookline, but in the region. Available to all incomes, and in some cases with integrated services, especially for seniors and families between 30 and 80 percent of area median income. We've heard locally and at the regional level that more and more families are being pushed out of the community, Brookline, specifically in other communities, due to the, not only the lack of supply, but the rising cost of rental and ownership housing. And increasingly, a larger percentage of low and moderate income residents are spending more on their housing costs, which certainly attracts from their ability to meet their most basic needs. Youth, after meeting with partners such as Steps to Success and the Teen Center, some takeaways were that many low and moderate income youth don't have the same access or exposure to activities and programs that their peers have, whether that is for things like music lessons or cultural activities. We're hearing that there's a gap in those activities. There are gaps in programming for tweens. I guess we're hearing that's probably an age group of kids who are not eligible for daycare, but they're not quite at the level where they're a teenager and they're sort of self-programming. They do sports and other things. So there's a gap in services for kids who fall in between those ages. And also, we heard from the Teen Center that once teens sort of age out of the Teen Center, there's really a lack of activities to give them structure and to help them continue to just progress and to form skills that they'll need as an adult moving forward in their lives.
Can you not be in there after 18?
Once, I think once you graduate high school. I could be wrong, but at some point, I think Matt, the Executive Director, was telling us, a lot of these kids, they are still at a, they're still at a point in their lives where they could use the structure, but they're just not eligible to show up and to take part in some of the programs they offer. So, and that was something he identified as a specific need, is how to serve kids who are no longer eligible for what the Teen Center provides. We heard this also at another, a number of consultations. Some students, including low, moderate-income youth who are not on the college track, need job readiness and skills training to help them succeed in vocational or service-oriented careers. A number of our consultations revealed that, look, everybody's not going to college, and there needs to be resources in place to help them to find a career where they can thrive. Public services and infrastructure, we consulted with parks and open space, Commission on Disability and others. Some of the takeaways were that we need to create infrastructure that supports alternatives to automobile travel, such as walking and biking, but these same facilities need to be constructed in order to meet the mobility needs of seniors and the disabled. Same thing with open space, parks and open space. These need to be, if they're being redesigned or reconstructed, to be built, to be more accessible to those populations. Public services, I think the board knows that there's a, that there are a lot of low mod income population in town who take advantage of a lot of the public services that are offered. Their needs are not homogeneous. Many populations require different types of services, whether they be for mental health, transportation, job training, childcare, English language lessons. It's important for us to continue to fund those types of activities. And related to funding, overall, not just for public services, but just in general, funding for many of these programs and services in the town is scarce, and it's dwindling. And local organizations that serve lower-income populations require increased fiscal support to meet the needs of their clientele. Block grant funds, over time, there's been a, have been somewhat diminished from even 10 years ago, even though those funds continue to be important seed money for the continued viability for some of these programs, for all of these programs. Just to touch on timeline, as I mentioned, we were in the process of doing a needs assessment through all the methods I previously mentioned, survey, meetings with community partners, face-to-face meetings, and we started to prioritize strategies to meet the needs. Tonight, obviously, with January 2020, we've released the draft consolidated plan for public review. We notified the public about the CON Plan in order to solicit feedback, whether here, whether through written comments, or however the public wants to deliver the comments. We want to hear from you. This is the first public meeting, and it's a logical starting point, because in May, we're going to, we'll finish the same process here. We will be back before the board asking for your approval of these plans. Just quickly on the rest of the timeline, we'll be moving shortly to the process to create the town's annual action plan. The first year of the consolidated plan is fiscal year '21. We'll create a fiscal year '21 annual action plan that feeds off of the CON Plan that we put together. That process, led by Select Board Member Franco, will be underway in March. We'll review proposals, and we'll formulate recommendations for the board's consideration. So the Select Board will review and approve the plans as part of the second public hearing in May, and our target date that we're working back from is May 15, 2020, because we need to have both the consolidated plan and the annual action plan submitted to HUD, no later than 45 days prior to the close of, prior to the start of the fiscal year. Immediate next steps, I just mentioned this, the RFP for CDBG funds will be available to prospective grantees this Thursday, January 30, 2020. We've advertised and notified prospective recipients, but I was hoping to use this as an opportunity to let others know about the availability of the RFP. Again, we'll meet in March for review applications and to formulate recommendations, and we will request at a future May meeting of the board that we have another public hearing to, one last opportunity for public comment before you review and approve the plans, so we can submit them to HUD. Obviously, it's a public hearing. If there are questions or comments, I'm happy to take any questions or listen to comments related to the draft process, or whatever else you have, questions you have of me, or from the public.
So we'll take questions from the board first? Any comments, questions?
I have a question, actually, about the timeline. I have other questions, too, but about the timeline, it looks like our town election's on May 5, and then in order to meet that May 15 deadline, it looks like we'd need to take this up on the 12th. Does that give you enough time to incorporate the feedback that you'll get on the public to be able to submit this document three days later?
That's generally the course we followed in previous years. I mean, we have to take every comment into consideration, and if, I think it's doable, and it's actually the course we follow every year. We have to allow for a 30-day public comment period before we even come back before the board. I feel like we've been able to get comments and incorporate them, or actually include them as part of the plan, just to acknowledge, for questions that we may not be able to specifically answer, just acknowledging the comment.
And so we would take a vote that night? Is that right, Ben?
Yeah, we should, yeah.
I guess that's what would happen.
Yeah, well, when would we get the comments? It was three days before you're putting them in. That's before a packet goes out.
I mean, that date is not, a May date is not fixed in stone.
So we'll have to work on that.
We can, we can work around, just keeping in mind that we have to have the plans available, and we have to have a 30-day public comment period before we come to you, but we're happy to work with you on any of the works.
And I would suggest that you give the board, the Select Board, hard copies of the draft plan. It's much easier to really review it confidently that way. And also, I restate my objection to CON Plan. I think that's really, really bad. You know, if we want to get the public involved in the process, we don't want to be getting them involved in a CON Plan. It may sound, you know, like a trivial thing, but I think it's important. I have a few other questions from other people.
I just wanted to better understand the interaction between the consolidated plan and the annual action plan. So my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the consolidated plan gives the overall framework for the coming five years, and the annual action plan and the solicitation of proposals from applicants is a way of operationalizing the content of the consolidated plan. So by producing a consolidated plan, we're sort of saying, this is what we're really looking for. Please, please submit proposals, applications that fall into the priorities that we put in the consolidated plan.
Exactly. That's absolutely right. We're trying to be broad and inclusive with the consolidated plan, create affordable housing, and then specifically, somebody will come in with a proposal to build five units somewhere. We're just trying to be consistency between what we say we want to do and actually include it. And it also actually helps the advisory committee to deliver, over acceleration about what projects should be funded, so.
But, so, I think it's an important point to make, that this is the start of the process, but in order to complete it and build more affordable housing or preserve affordable housing, we're reliant on applicants coming forward and advancing a project or putting in a proposal that achieves any of the goals that we have in the consolidated plan.
Exactly.
What are we doing to publicize this?
So we have, we have a number of, an email list that we send to former grant recipients, interested parties. We've put it in the news, we had an ad in the tab, we put it on the town website. We're trying to get the word out about its availability. Social media, I think we've used, if not both, the town of Brookline, the blog, Facebook and/or Twitter. We're trying to get it out there with as many different media as possible.
To follow up on that, if, let's say, a house of worship or community group would like to, they can gather a crowd, like you to come in and present there, or have someone from your team do that, is that a possibility?
Absolutely. We'd be happy to attend the meeting and to talk more about our planning process and the grant in general.
So I have three questions that you can answer now, or at a later point. And some of them may seem to be nitpicking, but I don't think they really are. So on page 156 of your plan, there's a chart on business activity showing zero public administration jobs, and those would be like town administrator and other employees here. And I'm a little concerned that, you know, we don't recognize those as important parts of our business activity in terms of looking at our needs, for example, workforce housing. So just look at that and see if that's a typo or something, because we clearly have public administration jobs in this town.
Could you tell me which page again? I'm sorry.
On the side, it says 156, but maybe 36 is...
36.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, the other question, it's on one page, somewhere in here, you talk about homeowner, homebuyer assistance. Do you know what those programs are that the town has?
We actually used to have a homebuyer assistance program. We discontinued the homebuyer assistance program. We used to use a source, we used to use CDBG and home funding to help a homebuyer get into the market. We found that the need between what a market rate unit is and what our subsidy could provide doesn't even get somebody to where they need to be to buy a unit. So it's a, it's a program that we used to run. It's, it's hard to say we'll overrun it again due to what's happened with real estate values, but it's just, it has not been utilized in, in, I can't say how many years, but I think the Housing Advisory Board, one of their points of discussion was whether or not it was a good use of federal resources to get one person into housing when those same resources could create more, more units of housing in an affordable housing project.
So that ought to be changed from here, because it's presented as if there is an active program. The other thing is, I can't tell you which page it's on, because, one, let's see, there's a, you have a list of priorities, or a list of goals, and one of them is for fair housing, and it's said to be a low priority. Is that, is there a reason why that would be a low priority?
I just want to stress that there are high, the way things are prioritized in this plan, it's not to say that the activity itself is a low priority. It's more to say that, based on feedback we've received about what the town's, where we should be allocating federal dollars, that's on, maybe on the lower end of, the perception is that that's on the lower end of what we should be doing with our federal dollars. It's not to say that fair housing is a low priority activity, but should we be directing dollars to those kinds of activities?
I'm sorry, Bernard, what page were you on?
56. 56?
It's 56 of the plan, page 174 of the packet.
And the packet numbering changes.
Yeah, I see that. I think I can find it.
Anyway, okay, those are...
There were some other questions that I'd gotten about that, too, about prioritization, so I'm glad you're, so you're saying in these priority levels, you're getting this from the feedback you're getting from the community, is that...
We are. We're trying to set...
No, I was just asking, could that change as more community input comes in? Could any of this change?
I think so. We're trying to be responsive to what we were being told the community priorities are. And I know it seems like we're saying something is a low priority. It couldn't be further from the truth. We understand fair housing is important. It's just we're looking at this in the, in the realm of trying to prioritize the use of federal dollars.
I think it also says that people who are concerned about that particular issue should see the need to engage in...
Advocate.
Community advocacy, or yeah, be an advocate, but engage in your community outreach process. Any other board questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Where in here, is it under Public Services? And that's a question. Is the need for transportation among our vulnerable populations, and that includes the elderly and disabled?
One of our long-funded public service programs is the Bets Program. If it's not called out specifically, I can tell you that transportation is something that the town has funded for a long time. If it's not in here specifically, I'll review why it's not in here, but it's, transportation is definitely a priority. We've heard from Ruth Ann and from others that that's something we should continue to provide as a service, through public service.
Okay, well, I just, I believe I've covered all the categories, and I don't, I don't see it specifically, so...
We'll certainly review that and make sure it gets...
Okay, this is a public hearing. Any public comment? Ms. Brown? Okay, this is a public hearing, any public comment, Ms. Brown?
My name is Deborah Brown, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. I'd like to begin by thanking the Chair for so thoughtfully going through this and teeing up what has really been a robust discussion so far. And actually, the question, most of the questions I planned on asking, you all asked, and so the one thing that, that I will be proposing is that we get the office to a community meeting, I think we can get 15 or 20 people in a room who aren't on boards or commissions or work for different departments, that may articulate a different set of priorities. I also feel like you'll probably get some, this year, some pretty detailed comments from, between Gare and Bridge and other organizations in town about the five-year, the five-year plan. So I will just wrap up very quickly and thank you all for being so thoughtful in your comments, and we'll get to you probably within the next week about a date.
And I take it it goes without saying that people can send in written comments and that you'll, you know, use them in the same way you'd use live comments?
If, you know what? From, from your mouth to the community's ears. I mean, just short of sometimes having to write down what people say, it, it's laborious. So typically what you end up doing is meeting with a small group of people, writing something up, having another meeting to get the feedback, and if you're lucky, you know, you get it done in time. But this year, we're committing to get you a set of comments that really focus in on the, the issues that, you know, I'm hearing, not as a member of a board or a commission, but that what people are expressing through the forums that, that I participate in.
Ms. Carroll?
Hi, I'm Carol, Carol from Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I am not here representing myself, I'm here to make comments from my husband Frank, who is attending the school superintendent meeting this evening, so he can't be here. So these are Frank's comments. "The five-year consolidated plan demonstrates a great deal of staff effort. The staff held many meetings to obtain information. A lot of effort has gone into compiling the results. In general, the plan appropriately emphasizes Brookline's needs for more affordable housing for people of all ages. Unfortunately, from the perspective of low-income older people, the draft plan has serious deficiencies. For many years, the Community Development Block Grant Program has been an important resource for addressing diverse needs of older Brookline residents. Unless reformulated, the plan will cut off funding possibilities for non-housing community development needs for seniors. The Age Fund City Committee devoted a meeting with the staff group to discuss the needs of low-income seniors. We emphasize the importance of community participation for health and well-being of older residents. We focused on transportation as an essential resource for community participation. Our message is not reflected in the plan. The plan must be broadened. Some needed changes in the plan are outlined below. The plan will be stronger if it recognizes the rapid growth in the older population. Currently, there are at least 18% of Brookline residents over 60, and by 2030, 30% of Brookline residents will be older than 60. Strategies for expanding the supply of affordable housing will have to pay special attention to senior needs. The section on non-housing community development needs should recognize the needs for low-income people to participate fully in community life when they no longer are in the workforce. For an older population, participation in community life is needed to avoid social isolation and depression. The need for assistance for senior transportation should continue to be recognized as the need to be addressed by CDBG program. Low-income seniors who do not, who do not drive should not be expected to rely entirely on walking in public transportation as modes of transportation to participate in community activities. Brookline's TRIPS program has provided strong documentation of the need for multimodal strategies to address transportation needs of seniors who do not drive. For many years, CDBG has contributed to financing Bets Brookline subsidized taxi service for low-income seniors. I just want to put in an aside, last year they cut that amount of money. The program has been a valuable resource for enabling low-income seniors to, to reach destinations of their choosing. The money amount for the Council on Aging is significant. For many years, the CDBG program has provided approximately $4,000 in funding for the Bets program. In short, the conceptualization of this section of the non-housing community development needs should be expanded to include the transportation assistance that low-income older people need to participate adequately in community life. The plan should also be expanded to include the possibility of funding for other strategies that would enhance opportunities for older people to participate in community life. I, Frank, appreciates the opportunity to comment on the draft report and hope that, that the recommendations will be incorporated into the plan."
Thank you.
I can attempt to answer any questions.
And you'll give Frank's statement to Mr. Viola?
He's going to email it.
I believe I received it by email.
Hi, Steve Vogel, Precinct 5 resident again. I think it's really exciting, Department of Planning and Community Development, with this whole process of creating a five-year comprehensive plan, not con-plan or whatever. I agree with you.
There are too many cons going on in this world.
Yeah, especially with Trump around, there's a lot of cons.
Oh, I didn't want to make this political, but yes.
I can't help myself. Anyway, one of the things that I am not quite sure in how this process is structured is if I'm understanding you guys putting a lot of work to create a plan, that there's been some, some amount of community input already, but it doesn't sound like it was sort of structured in sort of a way that is publicized throughout the town in ways that are functionally capable, is functionally, functional in terms of their ability to actually reach out to people. Strikes me that part of the process, and very early in the process, before you put something up and then start asking for comments, is that you, the plan should involve reaching out to community groups in advance of, before the plan is actually in place, and seeking out comments and suggestions and recommendations for what is most important to the community. That's my comments.
Mr. Viola, could you explain or describe the process, because you, I mean, the, the plan does talk about extensive outreach to various, various particular types of community organizations, so.
So our outreach plan was, we tried to come up with a, a long list of, of agencies, departments, organizations that were all serving a, a need, whether it's for low-income individuals who are, who are receiving services or if they create housing, we try to meet with many different groups who have many different missions and, and whose boards are comprised of, of people who live and work in the community and who understand through their professional lives and, and their lives as citizens in Brookline, what the needs are. The format for our outreach was to, to set up meetings, and in every case, multiple staff met with, with multiple stakeholders to, to talk about, you know, what their take were, was on needs based on, if you're a housing provider, tell us your thoughts on housing needs in Brookline, if you provide a public service, you know, where are the needs growing, what needs are we not considering, what needs are we not funding based on the, based on what their experience in, is working with a particular clientele. I guess I would just portray it as, we try to be as broad as possible, not only having Brookline organizations and, and town departments, but we tried to reach out at, at a regional level as well, to, to get as many perspectives as we could about what the perceived needs are, and trying to meet the various needs of, of low and moderate income individuals and families. It's the best I can describe our process.
Is there a list of the groups that we've met with to date?
The memo I, I gave to the board had, I believe, a list of 20 different organizations, boards, committees that we met with. I may be, I may be...
It's page 62, but these are sort of establishment, establishment-type entities, which is how most people engage with governmental bodies, because no one has time to do it on their own, for the most part. But I think, you know, maybe what some people are saying is that we got to figure out how to get beyond the established entities to capture the views of those people who are sort of isolated and alone, but may have some ideas that, you know, could be useful for, and I don't know how to do that, but, you know, I mean, there are many ways you can do that, but there's no one, you know, way that's going to be the, you know, silver bullet, so to speak, so.
Yeah, and we, and we tried to do outreach, posting availability of, things we're doing as part of this process, we let partners like the Housing Authority know to reach out to individual tenants. We, we put the plan in the public, the Brookline Public Library. We tried to get to places where it would be accessible to people who may not be tech-savvy and may not get that information online. Undoubtedly, this, we'd be open to any and all suggestions out of how to do better outreach, and we're happy to meet with any, anybody who comes forward and asks to be consulted with.
I see Ms. Brown is looking to say something.
Yes, Deborah Brown, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. Given that this is a, a long-term plan, much like we did with the climate strategy, and I, I think, hopefully with other issues, maybe, you know, we deserve a design, you know, some sort of charrette, where we just, you know, for two hours, two and a half hours, you know, we just call people in, we say, this, this, this is our, this is our major planning activity, and instead of, you know, the notice going to the usual suspects, that we redouble our efforts to make sure that it gets out to a broader audience. You know, one of the things we did with the renaming is we actually posted signs in businesses in Coolidge Corner. It's not particularly high-tech or sexy, but, but people saw it, you know, you put a notice in the bookstore, people see it, and so you just, or even the libraries, and so you, and then you just convene. And you may not be able to do it in one sitting, maybe you set up two or three, but I, I don't know the 20 entities that were reached out to, but my, my concern is, you know, when I hear the statistics about the elderly, you know, when I look at how we spend Community Development Block Grant money on senior citizens, I feel like, you know, even with the senior center, I'd like to see them get more money. And when I hear about, you know, the increasing population, it may not even be a nicety anymore, it may be essential. But that's a conversation that we can't really have with seniors unless we're willing to meet with seniors. So I, I, I am proposing that we do some sort of formal charrettes before this gets finalized, because this, this is four years and it locks us in in a very real way. And I think we could get people out to, to hear what, you know, what their views are and to react what's been done, to being done.
Any other questions from the, or comments from the audience? Any final words from you, Mr. Viola?
My final words would be that we welcome all comments, and we will certainly take them all into consideration, and I've heard a lot of good suggestions. I would just caution, this is a draft plan, it was never meant to be a perfect final version, there's plenty of room for improvement, and we'll certainly do our best to, to have a, a better final product.
Great, thank you. Oh, Mr. Fernandez?
Sure, just two quick things. One, if, if I, if I made some connections, would you be willing to sort of follow up and reach out to folks in certain organizations? I'm thinking about, for instance, the Asian American Family Network, I think would be a really good one to reach out to about this, and there's others as well. Would that be okay?
That'd be absolutely fine, I'd be happy to do that.
Great, and then one other question, the CDBG funds, the amount we receive, is that a function of the population that we have in Brookline?
It's a formula grant. So an allocation is made at the federal level and it passes through a, a formula, and that's, the amount we receive is a function of how, how we, how the formula applies to the town.
I don't think it's solely population-based, it may be a factor, but it's much more complicated.
Population, age of housing stock, other things.
Other things, but population is a factor in there?
Population is a factor.
All right, I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to remind folks that Select Board Member Heller and I are co-chairing the Census Complete Count Committee, and that we are accepting applications, and, and in these kinds of things, you know, population does matter, and making sure everybody counted here matters, because it, it directly impacts the amount of federal, state, and other resources that we get here as the town. So please apply today on, on the, the Brookline website, thanks.
Does it also, does the formula also include, I assume, the number of low income, low and moderate income?
It does.
Population?
There are a number of factors that determine how much each community receives, so, and it's a formula applied across every grantee that determine the final amount that we receive.
Thank you, Ms. Viola.
Thank you.
Next, grant of location, Eversource. Question of approving the petition from N-Star Electric Company, doing business ads Eversource Energy, for permission to construct a location for such a line of conduits and mine towers and manholes, with the necessary cables therein under the following public ways, Tappan Street, Grinnell Street. And that's it for this one. Mr. Masak?
Yes, Ray Masak for the Building Department. If I could just give you a brief background of how we got here. We hired Skanska to do a constructibility review of the project, and during that constructibility review, we found out that the project was too close to the power lines, and that was confirmed by Eversource. There's an OSHA requirement where we can't build within 20 feet. So the architect tweaked the building, we worked with Eversource and came up with a cost-effective solution, and that solution was to bury the lines by the stem wing. The other solution is we're outrigging over at Tappan and we're outrigging over by Cypress. So this has been an ongoing process for over a year, and we need to do this work to continue to build the project. And we have Eversource as well here.
What is outrigging, what is that, what does that mean?
Outrigging means the lines are on one side of the pole, they're going to move the lines to the other side of the pole. So like I said, this has been a year process, and it was a really bad day when Skanska came in and said, folks, we have a problem.
So I assume that you will be making sure that there's no gas leaks?
Well, I'm glad you had asked that. We, we didn't have the survey, but the survey came in today at around 3:00. And a lot of work, a lot of work has been done around the high school, they replaced the main... They replaced the main line in front of the building, as well as when we did the tap on the side of the building.
I know. We do have a form here, um, that, uh, says that there are none. Uh, the date of investigation is 1/14/20. Wendy, I've forgotten the date that you anticipate that this work will happen.
The work is gonna start tomorrow.
Okay. Okay.
So this is a complex profit, uh, project, this high school pill.
It's, uh, that's, that's...
It's an understatement.
Put it lightly, it's a very highly complex project. Getting this work done will allow us to move the crane in, the steel's gonna be coming in, I believe, at the end of, uh, sometime in March, so, um, the timing, we have to be impeccable with our timing.
How long is this work gonna take?
Hi, I'm Katie Flaherty, representing Eversource. If, when the grant is approved, then they will begin, and probably be five days at the most for that work that Eversource is going to do.
And how long will it take? I thought you said it's...
Five days.
Okay.
Normal business hours-ish?
I think that the town would dictate that, but I believe so.
Your application says, uh, normal business hours. Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing, any comments from the audience? No? Okay. I move approval of, uh, approving the petition of M., of N-Star Electric Company, doing business as Eversource Energy, for permission to construct in a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with necessary cables therein, under Tappan Street and Grinnell Street. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair both aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, Mr. Maisak, are you on the next one, too?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Ex, uh, should be representative.
Extonet.
Extonet.
Okay. So, um, another public hearing, question of approving the petition from Extonet Systems, Inc., for the permission to install a location for such lines of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein, and a location for new poles and attached equipment, including antenna, within the following ways, rights-of-way. Pleasant Street, um, another on Pleasant Street, and one on Edgemont Street. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you're doing here.
Uh, good evening. My name is Marty Cohen. I am with the, um, a consultant to Extonet, uh, company as network building and consulting. As you stated, we have, uh, proposals to, to, to install two small cell wireless facilities, um, one at 68 Egmont Street and the other at 228, uh, Pleasant Street. What the project primarily involves is, uh, replacement of existing concrete streetlights with, uh, steel poles that are look-alike poles, they'll look like the concrete poles. They'll ha, it'll have a luminaire, a new luminaire light, streetlight on it. Um, the, the antenna is just a single antenna, it's about, uh, two feet high, it'll be enclosed in a canister at the top of the pole. Um, we'll have electric meter on the pole, and then a small box, which is about three feet long, I think 10 inches wide, which will have three small radios. Those radios create the radio frequency signal, um, that goes up obviously to the antenna and, and broadcasts it out. Um, the, um, we have been through two reviews. One was with Peter Ditto, he reviewed the plans and approved our proposal. Um, and in accordance with your procedure, we went then to the, the Planning Board for their review and recommendation as well. I just wanted to bring up one thing regarding the Planning Board's review, and maybe in your, in your packages, I'm not sure. As I noted, we proposed to, um, use a small radio, uh, box or shroud, which is attached to the pole. There is an alternative way of mounting those radios, okay? And that is in the base cabinet on the ground. And I'm sure you're probably familiar with it, presumably at one point you may have approved it. There's an example right up Washington Street here, as you're approaching Beacon Street, of a base cabinet. We would like to stick with the pole-mounted, and I'll, I'll give you a few reasons why. Well, one is to start off with, the pole-mounted cabinet is a lot smaller, it's only, uh, three feet high by about 10 inches thick, but that base cabinet, um, is about two feet by two feet, and it, the one over there is quite high, it's almost as high as the mailbox. That's typically used when you have more than one wireless carrier. What we're planning here is just to service T-Mobile. We don't need or want a box that big. Aesthetically, I mean, many people think that the pole-mounted is much better because it is smaller. The base cabinet has a lot of bulk to it. The other issue is, uh, sidewalk clearance. It does take up a considerable amount of space in, uh, the Egmont Street location. The sidewalk is fairly narrow, so it could create an obstruction. I would also point out, and I checked this out very carefully, both poles are not right at the curb, but they're a little bit, sort of, towards the middle of the sidewalk. What we do, obviously, we put the new pole right next to the old pole. So if we had a base cabinet on that, in the Egmont Street location, it really would narrow the passageway quite a bit. So, I just wanted to make the case for what we proposed, and it is what Peter Ditto, um, approved. It just, we had a split of opinion at the Planning Board. The two board members who were there that day that wanted the base cabinet, they said they just wanted to keep the pole clean, nothing on it. But, you know, there's pros and cons. We have to think that the, the pole-mounted is a better solution and looks better aesthetically.
So, you're, you're taking down the concrete poles completely?
Correct. The reason we do that is the, the poles are not structurally strong enough to accommodate, um, our equipment, so. Unlike the wood utility poles, which we typically are strong enough and we attach directly, that's standard. That's what, you know, you have a look-alike pole at Washington Street location, so.
So, so the wiring goes down into the ground at that point, or?
Yeah, everything will, the wiring will remain underground, yeah.
But it goes underground at that point?
Right where the pole is and in, like, straight into conduit, correct. Yeah.
Any questions from the board before we go to public comment?
I'll just say, in a past life, I managed the Building Maintenance Department along the Massachusetts Turnpike, and, uh, poles were a huge part of their responsibility. Downed poles, um, were critical. Uh, I would agree that the cabinet needs to be up high...
Okay.
... for clearance, um, and also mice. Mice get into those things, and the higher you can put the wiring, the better.
Good point, right, yeah.
Uh, could you summarize what you think the Planning Board's, uh, the two members, what their, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm part of hearing, too.
Summarize what you think the Planning Board's, um, objections were. Is that...
Yes, thank you.
Um, oh, sorry, could you repeat it one more time? Sorry.
Summarize what you think the Planning Board members' objections were.
I think for the ones they just, they wanted, uh, the base cabinet is, they wanted to keep the pole clean and nothing on it.
Okay.
And I think, you know, I think it's aesthetics, really, essentially.
A nightmare for operations.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah.
Um, let me, because this issue has come up in the past, let me just confirm, you've said this, but let me confirm it, that you're not putting a pole next to a pole, it's just gonna be one pole that ends up...
We'll put the new pole and then take the old pole down.
Right. Won't be double pole.
Oh, God, not, you're not gonna have two poles right next to it. No, no, no.
So you are in charge of taking down the other pole?
We are, yes, yes, yes.
We have him on tape now.
So, um, in terms of the Planning Board, uh, disagreement, and there's nothing...
Well, there, there was a lot of written there, but I think the bottom line is we have a, um, a letter from Mr. Hyken, who's the Chair of the Board, who's asking for the Board if it supports the plans that Extonet has proposed and approved by the, uh, engineer that they wanted, um, uh, these, uh, these two conditions, um, let me read it, imposed.
Okay, two conditions. Prior to installation, the location of the pole and final plans, including paint color, to minimize visual impact of the wireless equipment, shall be reviewed and approved by the Assistant Director of Transportation and Engineering. And prior to installation, evidence of the Select Board's grant of location shall be submitted to the Assistant Director of Transportation and Engineering.
Okay, well, that's our, that's our responsibility.
So, what about the, the first one? Has that been, or you, or you, will you submit that information after this approval?
Yes, we can do that, yeah.
So, the...
So we should make a condition.
Absolutely.
For approval.
All right. Okay. This is a public hearing, any comments, questions from the public? No? Uh, I move approval, subject to the conditions laid out by the Planning Board, um, the condition being, irrelevant condition being, that prior to installation, the location of the pool, pole, and final plans, including paint color, to minimize visual impact of the wireless equipment, shall be reviewed and approved by the Assistant Director of Transportation and Engineering. So our vote is conditioned on that, that occurring. So, um, I move approval of the petition from Extonet Systems, Inc., for permission to install a location for such lines of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein, and a location for new poles and attached equipment, including antenna, within the following rights-of-way, Pleasant Street, um, another one on Pleasant Street, and finally a third one on Edgemont Street. All in favor, indicate by saying aye, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair both aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
2019 storefront survey in Coolidge Corner Business Improvement District Steering Committee update. Ms. Mooney? Now, you're, you're making a presentation on two issues, right?
Two separate items.
You make sure they're separate, yeah.
Of course.
Nope. Okay. Good evening. I'm Meredith Mooney, Economic Development and Long-Term Planner. So I'm here to provide updates on two separate items. First, the 2019 storefront survey update, um, and then an update on efforts to form a business improvement district, also known as a bid, in Coolidge Corner. So we were here just six months ago for the 2018 storefront update, um, back in July, and update on the commercial areas. So my goal is to move through the 2019 storefront survey section pretty quickly and spend most of the time, um, updating you about the Coolidge Corner bid. So as you know, once a year, the Economic Development Division, um, walks around Brookline's eight commercial areas and takes inventory of the storefronts. We make note of whether a storefront is vacant or occupied, um, update whether or not there's a new occupant, um, update the use of the storefront, is it retail, restaurant, um, service, and then on COMAV, we also have an institutional use to monitor BU and storefronts. Um, and we also make note if there's any chain affiliation, national chain, regional, local chain, or is this an independently-owned business. So we monitor the vacancy rates throughout town, because vacancy rate is a very useful indicator of a commercial area's health. Um, and then the storefront survey process is a way for the Economic Development Division to track any trends, emerging trends that might pose long-term challenges to the commercial areas. As of 2019, the, the townwide vacancy rate stood at about 10%. So it ticked up slightly from, um, 2018 by about a half a percentage point, um, and both this 10% vacancy rate, along with the increases, consistent with regional trends. A couple of things to note. One, a significant contributing factor to the townwide vacancy rate are storefronts that are either slated for redevelopment or are under renovation, um, and that the methodology for the storefront survey is relatively conservative, meaning that if we, if a storefront looks vacant, even though as economic development staff, we might know that the space is under lease and an occupant will be there relatively soon, um, if it appears vacant, it's marked as vacant. So if you deduct the storefronts that are either slated for redevelopment or are under renovation, um, and then also deduct storefronts that economic development staff are confident are under lease and will be occupied within the foreseeable future, um, the actual vacancy rate falls to about 5.5%. In light of this fact, I think, um, our conclusion is that Brookline's commercial areas remain relatively healthy. So, Brookline's areas remain relatively healthy, um, but the small business community continues to face, um, a set of challenges and issues. So the column on the right are issues that we highlighted back in our July presentation, and then the, um, additional items in the blue box are, um, issues that were identified by the Small Business Development Committee. So going back to the right column, the final bullet, which talks about potential revenue per square, limitations on potential revenue per square foot, um, for some restaurants due to, uh, parking requirements in the town zoning bylaw, um, is actually, was an issue that was addressed in this past town meeting with Warren Article 15, which eliminated minimum parker requirements in the commercial areas, uh, which was a Warren article that was sponsored by Linda Pelkey and Paul Stainer. So, uh, we can cross that particular issue off of the list. Speaking of the Small Business Development Committee, there they are. They convened for the first time in September and met twice a month through the end of 2019. Select Board Member Fernandez chairs the committee. And the, um, Small Business Development Committee was very much in learning mode for most of 2019. We had guest speakers in, um, had discussions about issues facing the small business community in Brookline's commercial areas, and then also investigated, uh, tools and resources available to address those issues. One of these tools was business improvement districts, or bids. So at the end of 2019, at their final meeting of the year, the Small Business Development Committee approved, uh, their first official recommendation to the Select Board, which I have the honor of presenting to you. Um, and that is, uh, the exact language is included in your Select Board packets. Um, but more or less, um, the SBDC recommends that the Select Board direct town staff to support the Coolidge Corner bid steering, Coolidge Corner Bid Steering Committee's efforts to form a comprehensive proposal for a bid in Coolidge Corner. Uh, and as it just so happens, um, for the past year, there has been a group of Coolidge Corner business owners who have been trying to, um, start or generate interest in forming a bid in Coolidge Corner. Um, so what is a bid? A bid is a type of district management tool, uh, that is initiated, funded, and overseen by the property owners in the district. So, um, another example of a district management tool would be a parking benefits district, which, um, you're conducting interviews for now in Brookline Village, uh, and you could say that a parking benefits district is sort of like a bid-like. It's a similar concept, different funding source, um, and it's much more limited in terms of how those funds can be utilized. But bids, the scope of what those funds can be utilized and what bids can do is much broader. Um, some examples of what bids could do, they could conduct, um, studies about what the optimal retail mix is in a commercial area, and then try to recruit businesses that would align with that, um, optimal mix. Um, they could undertake marketing studies for the commercial area, um, develop and host special events, and undertake, you know, streetscape beautification, capital improvement projects, et cetera. In terms of the Coolidge Corner Bid Steering Committee's progress, they're still very much in the initial phase. We are testing the feasibility of a business improvement district in Coolidge Corner. Um, in your packets, there are five letters of initial support for a Coolidge Corner bid from property owners in Coolidge Corner, and the properties represented in, um, those letters are included on this slide. The fact that we have these five letters in hand is very encouraging. This is not the first time that there's been interest in forming a business improvement district in Coolidge Corner. Several years ago, there was interest as well, um, but that initiative fizzled before they were able to, um, do outreach and... So we've identified a couple of action items on the horizon. In the near term, at the end of February, Mass Development is going to open applications for its real estate technical services grant, and so the town would be able to apply for the grant on behalf of the Coolidge Corner bid steering committee. And if we receive the grant, we get access to a bid consultant. So this woman is an expert in forming business improvement districts. She's worked with communities all throughout the state. They get business improvements districts up and running, most recently in Central Square. We've been advised that it's a very competitive process, and that if we have some indications of support from the Select Board, that will help make our application more competitive. A little bit farther down the line, we would develop an MOU with the bid. I think most of this would be done with DPW, and we did have a meeting with Commissioner Papa Sturgeon, who didn't have any initial concerns about that process going forward. Then we also have to establish a billing mechanism. We also had a meeting with Gina Francone, the Finance Director, and she didn't have any concerns about either setting up this mechanism or maintaining it going forward. She felt that it would be a pretty straightforward, simple process. And then way down the line, once a comprehensive proposal has been developed, property owners have signed onto it, they've gone through the required public process, eventually the Select Board would authorize the business improvement district. So really, at this point, we're... Going back to the Small Business Development Committee's recommendation, staff is looking for guidance from the Select Board about whether or not we should continue to invest time in supporting the Coolidge Corner bid efforts.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Nope. Have you gotten to the issue of where the funding would come from?
Yes, sorry. Didn't explicitly address that in the presentation. This is very important. So the bid, it's a district management tool, but property owners are agreeing to assess themselves a fee, and then that fee would be collected by the town, but they give it back to the bid, and those funds would be utilized to benefit the commercial district.
And what is the... What level of fees are you talking about?
That's to be determined. So part of the process, and it would be really helpful to have the expertise and guidance of a big consultant to help us navigate this process, but there are different types of fee structures that you can subscribe to depending on the composition of your commercial area. So to be determined.
So the town's financial support really is in the way of some staff time? Is that what you're saying?
Sorry, could you say that again? I don't know if I understand the question.
The town's contribution would be in the form of staff time?
Yes. It is possible that the town could have, like, a higher level of participation in the bid, but that would depend on what property owners want the bid to do and the opportunities which the town would participate.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have a couple of questions. So the suggested board vote sounds like we would be telling you or telling Planning Department that this is a priority, that they have to prioritize. We have a lot of priorities in this town. How does that sort of fit into all the other things going on? For example, Newbury, and things are taking up huge amounts of the time of the Planning Department.
Under, you know, less than optimal personnel situations, just because we're down people.
So that might be a question that Allison could address, but I... From the Economic Development Division's perspective, I think if a business improvement district was ever created in Coolidge Corner, that it could be a benefit in the over economic development goals and the function of our office. And as we've seen with, you know, how it's much more effective to be able to work with business organizations like the Chamber, the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association, we now have a Brookline Village Business Association, any of these organizations that are making it easier to coordinate with the business community help us do our jobs better. That's my thought and response.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Stein...
I'm sorry.
I just mentioned your name.
Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director. I'm not sure I heard the questions completely, but I think we have a particularly good opportunity right now, given that there's a good deal of interest by the business community itself, and that's critical in creating a bid. So I think it's important for us to, with your blessing, to take advantage of that interest right now. And in terms of other priorities, we'll be back.
Well, I think Ms. Heller's question was, if we prioritize this, are you still going to have staff resources for Newbury?
And other... And everybody else you have to?
In terms... This is an appropriate priority for the Economic Development and Long-Term Planning Division. Other staff will be working on other things, but it's really the regulatory office that I'm particularly concerned about at this point, in terms of the demands on its staff time.
Right.
But I'm...
We're concerned too.
Right.
Okay. By the way, I have a couple of other questions, and I'll ask them now. Let's see. So the BID would include, and based on the map, includes a lot of residential properties whose interests may not be congruent with the business properties. And I assume residential properties are assessed for the bid program.
So I think some of the residential properties that are included, it's a stretched-down Beacon Street, and there was an effort to include, it was the Holiday Inn, the Inn at Brookline currently, in the business improvement district. And I think it is possible to have the business improvement district and have residential properties be included, but wouldn't be assessed. But again, the challenging thing about this point in the process is that the map that was outlined, the priorities that have been stated of the bid at this point are based on the interests of the business owners as opposed to the property owners. And I think the business owners have been very successful at doing some of that initial outreach and trying to incorporate property owners' perspective into this initiative, because at the end of the day, a bid is an organization organized by property owners. So that could change.
By the way, in your materials, you talk about benefits to property owners, and one of those benefits is that costs may be passed on to tenants. So it seems to be a little bit of a conflict there.
Which I think is why it's encouraging that the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association... There's a lot of overlap between the Coolidge Corner Bid Steering Committee and the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association. And so I think it's encouraging that the business owners, knowing that this cost is going to be passed along to them at the end of the day, still feel that this is important for the long-term vibrancy and competitiveness of Coolidge Corner and their ability to continue to be in business there.
I guess I'm also concerned about the residences which are in the district, not only on Beacon, but also Harvard Street. And, I mean, it's a small amount, but you're talking about, to the extent that they are assessed, and you said that it may not be, but to the extent they are, that's going to put pressure on rents for residential properties too. So just throw that out there, something to think about.
That's definitely a concern I can relay back to the Steering Committee.
Has the... Have the merchants who are involved discussed this issue?
About the implications for residents?
About the implication that rents might go up.
I think there's the assumption that vibrancy of the commercial areas improves property values for neighboring residential areas, so I think that there's that assumption.
But that benefits the landlords in most of these cases. There's a lot of rental housing, so it doesn't necessarily translate to a, you know, a financial gain for the people who are living there. In fact, it could be a financial hit. I guess what Bernard is getting at.
And that's definitely another important point that I can raise with the Steering Committee.
Yeah, I just want to also sort of add and maybe clarify that the potential uses for this funding, and I think that's important to clarify and to confirm, that residential properties are not going to be hit with this fee, and we should make sure that that's the case. But assuming that that won't be happening, that the outcomes or impact may not be very different than, for instance, the parking benefits district, and what Brookline Village currently decides to do with the funding that comes in, should we, as a board, approve any increases, et cetera, et cetera, and improvements that they make there. And I certainly don't think that we should say, well, we don't want to make improvements to commercial districts because that might raise rents. I mean, I don't know where that puts us, you know? I just don't know where that puts us if we decide not to make improvements to commercial districts, understanding that I am a renter that lives right in here and will probably be impacted if that was the case. The other thing that I wanted to point out too, and confirm, just make sure I'm not wrong about this, is that we still haven't gotten the Brookline Village Parking Benefits District up, and I'm excited to see what happens there and what we can learn from it. But going forward in the future, the two of these are not mutually exclusive. There could be a business improvement district in the same place as a parking benefit district. That's correct?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Just for my own edification, I just want to unpack what you said about the application being stronger if the Select Board affirmatively states support. Does that mean that if we don't vote to support this, this project can't go forward, a bid can't be created? Does it require government involvement?
It will require close coordination with different town departments in order to create a... Help inform the bid's proposed budget. And then particularly with the memorandum of understanding, that's going to require a lot of town input as well. So I think if the Select Board were to not indicate that this is something that town staff could... Should invest time in, that the state or Mass Development would probably look at that and say, this isn't a community that is serious about supporting this effort and might prioritize other communities where this is a priority.
Okay.
Plus, there's so much in the public realm, that's... I don't know how you could do it without town support.
Yeah.
Okay. And there's reference to five property owners being supportive of this, and the Merchants' Association being supportive. Has anybody raised concern about it?
I... So I did not, based on what I've heard about conversations that the Steering Committee members have had with the property owners, those initial conversations were either very supportive and interested in learning more about a bid and feel that this could be a good thing for Coolidge Corner, or sort of cautious interest, but I don't necessarily know if there were any explicit concerns that were addressed in those conversations at this point, since it is so early.
So under the slide, benefits to property owners, that's just for the board's information, that's page 276 of our packet. One, two, three, four. The fifth bullet down says costs may be passed on to tenants, and I'm assuming, in this instance, they're talking about commercial tenants.
Yes.
So my concern is, what is that going to do to the rents for especially mom and pop shops, which have struggled in Brookline? You know, we have lots of banks and lots of drugstores and lots of, you know, big national chain businesses, but what does that do to the vibrancy of Coolidge Corner in terms of these small, unique businesses?
I think the small mom and pop shops recognize that in order to be successful and continue to exist in Brookline, they need additional foot traffic, they need more people coming into the commercial areas, and a business improvement district could provide special events programming that would attract them here, or the streetscape beautification where people would, you know, be more inclined to come to Coolidge Corner as opposed to the Natick Mall. So they see this as a necessity to maintain a competitive advantage and continue to exist in Brookline. And so they, in recognition of the potential gains, they think that the cost of having participation in a bid being passed along to them is worth it.
Could at some point, the board, if it's so desired, pass some sort of a resolution asking that the business owners not pass the cost on to the mom and pops, but only to the, you know, national chains or the bigger businesses?
That's a... I don't know the answer to that. I could try to get more information and circle back.
That'd be difficult.
Go ahead.
I think that would be difficult, but it makes good sentiment.
I mean, putting some public pressure also, you know, you said resolution, so it wouldn't have the force of law necessarily, but for us to affirm that that's something we would, you know, hope that property owners would do, especially by these...
Yeah.
By these, the mom and pops that you said that are, you know, the ones that are struggling the most, not the chains and others that really aren't, and not in the same way, anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say one thing.
Could you come up and... We don't take comments from the audience, only from the podium. Okay.
I also would like the opportunity to speak.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Why don't you go, Ann?
Ann Myers. I live on Bradford Terrace, and I've been involved with a group that's working on the business improvement district. I've been going to all their meetings, and I just wanted to say on this point that all the people who are working on it now are moms and what you'd consider moms and pops. David Lashinsky from Eureka, the Booksmith is there, Olive... The Olive Connection, they're the people who really want to get more activity in Coolidge Corner. They're the ones who are working on it. So I don't think... And the pass-through, it's not that they're going to be charged directly, it's... Their leases allow for pass-throughs, and that's what this is essentially. I just wanted to clarify that.
Ms. Hamilton, do you want to say something?
I just wanted to say, great presentation. You were very respectful of the hour. You covered the material in a very succinct way, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown, did you have a comment?
Yes. Deborah Brown, Precinct One. I love Coolidge Corner, and it is one of my favorite places to go. If something happened to Brookline Booksmith, I would be very sad. So, that said, I don't know that anybody has reached out to the residents. And when I heard the comment about the impact, you know, that the district might include some of the residential areas, if you don't have that conversation, this could be a non-starter. And so I got nothing. And we will show up, and I would be willing to venture a guess, that depending on how it's characterized, you will have a lot of support for it. But if you spring it on people as a fait accompli, that's what happened with the Holiday Inn. You know, it was just... There was no affirmative community engagement. It was like, this is what we're going to do, and we just kind of said, oh, think again. And it didn't work out in the way that the business had planned. And so, you know, I'm a believer in Coolidge Corner. I'm a believer that we need more foot traffic. I also think that whatever we come up with should also include some sort of way figuring out how to better manage the density. I know that's a more complicated zoning issue, but as we're talking about these disparate pieces, they all sort of build on one another, so... And I didn't even mention transportation.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. We have to vote on... Do you need a vote for anything?
It would be great. There's some proposed vote language in your packet.
Okay, so it says that the Select Board directs town staff to provide the appropriate resources and assistance to the Coolidge Corner Business Improvement District Steering Committee's effort to develop a comprehensive bid proposal for Coolidge Corner and authorizes the town administrator to apply for the Mass Development Real Estate Technical Services Grant on behalf of the town of Brookline. I move approval, conditioned on, understanding on the part of Planning Department, this is not going to impede the efforts to address all the various other projects that we have going here in Brookline, so... And I think the representation was that this is going to take staff of the Regulatory Division, not of...
No, no.
Economic Development. Economic Development, I'm sorry. Not other divisions. So that's somewhat helpful, so... But, you know, the point is still made that, you know, we have a lot of priorities here, and we can't be careful about balancing them. So all in favor, unless someone has any questions or comments. All in favor indicate so by saying aye, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Steinfeld again.
For the final time tonight, Allison...
is not going to impede the efforts to address all the various other projects that we have going here in Brookline." So, and I think the representation was that this is going to take staff of the Regulatory Division, not, economic development, I'm sorry, not other divisions. So that's somewhat helpful, so, but, you know, the point is still made that, you know, we have a lot of priorities here, and we can't be careful about balancing them. So, all in favor, unless someone has any questions or comments. All in favor, indicate so by saying aye. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Steinfeld again.
For the final time tonight, Alison Steinfeld, Planning Director. This relates to the Pell application for 209 Harvard Street. If you recall, a few weeks ago, you conducted a public hearing, at which point, the developer of the proposed 40B at 209 Harvard made a presentation, and you subsequently heard public comment. I attempted to incorporate those public comments into the letter that is before you. You will note that this particular Pell application is different than the prior 16 ones that have come before the board. Specifically, both the building commissioner and I have raised the issue that by carving out a 40B zone out of the 209 Harvard Street site, that development may create an infectious invalidity of the office building on the front of Harvard Street. Specifically, that means that either the office building will be in, there will be non-conformities created, and/or the office building will be in violation of its special permits. I've discussed this possibility with Mass Housing Partnership, and we concurd that it would be appropriate for the Select Board to formally raise this issue, and to request the developer provide evidence or a case to the building commissioner specifically as to why our claims are not valid. And based on that legal analysis, the building commissioner, as the zoning enforcement officer of the town, will make a determination. And depending upon the nature of that determination, we'll figure out how to proceed. But we're asking Mass Housing Partnership not to review the Pell yet until the commissioner has an opportunity to make that decision.
My only comment is, as you know, I don't like pompous words, like infectious invalidity. And that's a, I know it has a specific meaning, based on a Massachusetts case, which, you know, wasn't involving zoning. But could you say that by actually describing what it is you're talking about, instead of using the phrase that...
Sure, I can take it out.
Yeah, okay.
I'll just take it out.
I know, this is for Mass Housing Partnership, and they, you know, are probably aware of what the term means and how it's used here. But this is also a public document, I think that we should be careful about using terms that may be a little obscure.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that. Specifically, it means, in this case, creating non-conformities or in violation of the special permits.
And you describe that later on, but it's not clear.
Right. I'll just read, adjust the paragraph, certainly.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to ask, is this, in your mind, I still don't understand the non-conformities and all that, but I don't know that I necessarily need to at this very moment, but in your mind, if your concerns are validated, does that mean this can't go forward? Or does it mean they need to make certain changes to the proposed design in order for it to go forward? I'm not sure.
Well, basically, they're proposing to cut the site in half, and develop the parking lot, and leave the office building, under different ownership. I think that there's no way they could proceed with the 40B. I don't think there's any way that they can develop a building on that 40B and not create problems for the office building. But if they can come up with a way, great. Now...
And are those problems just related to permitting, or is there like an actual, like, tangible, real-life problem? Or is it just a matter of...
It's the permitting.
Serious legal, legal defects.
Wouldn't it create a problem with FAR?
On the office building site, plus parking issues. The office building was given at least one special permit, on the condition that the parking lot remained a parking lot, either for cars and/or landscaping. They're proposing to put a building there.
Was that in the 80s?
I forget the date, in the 90s, perhaps?
Okay.
I mean, there are a host of legal issues.
Do those kinds of conditions last forever?
It goes with the land, as far as I'm concerned.
Land use changes, though.
But at any rate, we're asking the developer to prove to us that the problems are not being created. If the building commissioner determines that there is a zoning violation, then I don't know what we do. And I will consult with, obviously, our town council and our 40B consultant, in terms of what we present to the state. I mean, this Mass Housing Partnership is committed to creating affordable housing, and it's conceivable it doesn't care about the problems. But let's do one thing at a time.
Wouldn't we have the same problem at the Kent Street 40B? And they're not dividing the property, but putting a building there is going to create, seems to me, FAR-type problems, if not other things.
But there are conditions on the use of the land.
Right.
Pardon?
There are conditions on use of the land.
It's a parking lot.
This, this...
This is a parking lot?
No.
No.
Kent Street.
Yeah. 209 Harvard Street consists, right now, is one parcel, consists of an office building and the parking lot in the back. They're proposing to create two sites.
Right, okay. That's the difference between Kent Street, but doesn't Kent Street have similar, what's called...
Kent Street is also just residential.
Well, 209, there's a special permit in place for 209, which means that the building doesn't conform to zoning, and the only way it could have been constructed is because there was a requirement that that parking lot existed.
There are other issues as well.
Well, but, yeah, that's just simplified for...
Yeah, that, I was, I will tell you, these issues were raised on both Hancock Village 40Bs, but Chestnut Hill Realty was aware of the issues, and very carefully carved out the 40B, so it wouldn't be creating any non-conformities in the remainder of the land. So they figured out a way to do it. I don't know if this developer could do so, but we're giving him an opportunity to try.
Okay.
Yes, I have one. I may be wrong about this, because we did hear this issue a while ago. I thought that there were some safety issues raised, and I'm not sure I see that as strongly as I would like to.
One, two. The fourth bullet down, I notice, references safety. As does the following, I'm just quickly looking for words, safely and safety. So the fourth and fifth bullets address safety. Obviously, if it's not sufficiently strong, I'll be happy to make that change.
Do you have a record of the testimony that night, right?
Well, I could get the minutes, I took my own notes.
At the public hearing? There was a public hearing on this issue?
Correct.
Yeah. So maybe we could review the tape and understand what those issues were.
I'll be happy to work with Devin and do that.
Okay. So I just, I'm not sure that this is strong enough, in my view.
What's the deadline for this letter?
The 30th.
So, two days from now.
So if you want that to happen, I think you've got to give Ms. Steinfeld some discretion, so that we can get the letter in on time.
I was happy to see reference to a shadow study, which did come up at that public hearing, and noise, concern about circulation and the operations of the building, particularly around trash collection, and moving in and moving out. So I think, I think there were a number of issues that were raised at the hearing that did make their way into the letter in an appropriately strong way.
Given that we need to have a decision about this infectious, whatever it is, infectious invalidity, maybe we could just say we need to have that first, before we provide all of our comments.
My concern is that MHP does not have to agree with us, and they may proceed with issuing the Pell and tell us to address this during the course of the public hearing. I don't know, I just didn't want to take the chance. So I thought we should raise the issues in this letter, unless you prefer to make a very strong statement.
Well, have you spoken, have you discussed this with them?
With MHP, yes.
Yes.
And have they expressed that opinion?
They expressed the opinion that we, rather than the town to make a determination, that we should just let the developer make a case, so we don't have to do the work, and we can respond. So that was the agreed-upon reproach.
But they're not willing to wait for the rest of the letter until, you know, it seems to me...
I could certainly contact her tomorrow, say that the Select Board met, and would prefer not to raise any issues specific to the Pell, and rather make a definitive statement...
Well, and they want to do it after we resolve this issue.
Right.
But MHP won't commit to dealing with the infectious invalidity issue before issuing a funding commitment.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think we can't assume that they are going to cooperate there.
I would like just to see this language beefed up, and, you know, talk about neighborhood concerns of safety, and, you know...
What were the neighborhood concerns of safety of the...
Because it says they rely on the ZBA to ensure that it's safe, but can it be made safe? That's the question.
As safe as possible, under the constraints of 40B, yes. And I do want to take this opportunity to affirm how very effective the ZBA is in addressing the issues. They're very good at this. They're very concerned about safety, which is really one of the few issues that they can focus on, under 40B. They're also...
That's one of the reasons I'm concerned about it, is that, you know, I don't want them to shuffle it under the rug.
I know you're concerned.
The developer.
I'm sorry, what?
Our own process addresses these concerns.
But, again, part of our process is being very emphatic in the Pell letter.
Right.
I don't know the extent to which the state really acknowledges our comments, but it's worth a try. Having, I am entitled to a little cynicism after 17 40Bs.
Okay, okay.
So is your preference to strengthen the letter in terms of safety?
Well, I'm not sure how we can strengthen it. What type of language would talk about?
And what kind of safety are we concerned with? Pedestrian safety?
Vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian.
That's what's listed, yeah, what's listed is number four and five bullets.
So it says, "Accommodates safe vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian circulation." I mean, you know, I guess the other safety concerns would be the construction methods that they use, and, you know, making sure that there's no safety issues with construction, but that sort of goes out the same, doesn't it?
I mean, they have to build to code.
And we do have construction management plans.
I'm comfortable with the letter as drafted. I think, speaking just for myself, this project is not as crazy and inappropriate as some of the others we've seen. And I'm willing to engage in a conversation about it, and not just to sit out of hand.
You can speak on my behalf, as well.
Co-sign.
Okay, so let's vote on this letter.
Before you do, sir, so I'm going to take out the reference to infectious invalidity.
I don't think you should. I don't agree with Bernard. I mean, I think you could define it for the public, but I think that the...
Yeah, I'm fine with just make sure that it's clear what that means. And you talk about what it means towards the end of that paragraph, but you make sure that it's, I mean, it's clear that that's what you're talking about.
I'll restructure the paragraph.
I mean, I want the funding agency to see that there's a serious legal issue here, which is infectious invalidity, and whether we like the term or not.
It's raised in the second paragraph, and it's raised in the last paragraph. So I think it's pretty clearly in there.
Okay, you got it?
And just to, do you want safety emphasized, or is it sufficient?
Because you put "safe" in bold.
How about underline? Capitals? It's getting late.
Or you can say, "The board is concerned with safety issues. It defers to the zoning board with P.O.s blah, blah, blah." Is very concerned about safety issues.
Qualifier.
And if I may just add one more comment. Any comments I made about the potential infectious invalidity are mine, the ultimate determination must be made by the building commissioner, in his capacity as zoning enforcement officer. I have no enforcement.
So you just raised the issue?
Correct.
It's your job. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I move approval of the letter submitted on behalf of 209, with respect to 209 Harvard Development LLC, to the Massachusetts Home and Finance Agency, in accordance with Chapter 40B, as amended by our discussion this evening. All in favor? Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, the real estate transfer tax, next. Next is our real estate transfer tax.
Oh, yay.
Okay, can we go on now? Okay, question of approving the filing of a bill to authorize a real estate transfer tax in accordance with the town meeting vote under Article 9 of the Fall 2019 Special Town Meeting. Ms. Hamilton, would you like to lead this, or...
Sure. So I think there's been a lot of confusion, because there were a lot of versions. I had a hard time with version control.
Version conversion.
Yeah. So my understanding is what we will be voting on contains language that does reference a town-wide referendum, and language saying up to 2%.
Right. And there's just one location, one place in the draft here where there's inconsistent, you know, usage, so...
And I believe Ben found some inconsistency.
Yeah, I'm just confused, and I think this was part of the conversation on the listserv today, about Section 2, Letter B, and the reference to the submission of a residential exemption application. It seems like this refers to sale price, and I don't understand why we're talking about residential exemption applications, as needing to be submitted.
Do you have a proposal to make it consistent?
So my reading of Section 2 is that this is evidence, lists a variety of different things that are to be submitted, as evidence that a transfer is taking place, in order for a deed to be recorded. And if that's the case, then I guess a record, an application for residential exemption fits that. But I just want to confirm that that's why we're requesting it, and we're not conflating sale price with the amount of taxes that are being collected. So I guess it's more of a clarifying question as opposed to a proposal for a change. And I look to the people who were more involved in the drafting of this. I can raise the question, but I can't answer it, too.
You answer it.
I'm not the one that made the change. Do you want to take a stab at it?
I didn't make that change, either.
Okay.
Can we take it out?
No, no, no. I think town council may have made it.
I wonder if the, I think the term residential exemption is confusing. I wonder if it's intended to be later on, if we decide that there are certain exemptions, and maybe the word residential is the problematic word here, meaning, because it does talk later about unless there's an exemption from this.
So I'm looking over your shoulder, just because I can't find the latest version. But again, Section 2, the first sentence reads, "A copy of the deed or other instrument evidencing that transfer shall be provided to the town, and shall be accompanied by," and I take that to mean that this is evidence that a sale has taken place. And then, one of the supporting documents that's listed, again, B, is an application or an affidavit of intent to seek a residential exemption. So if we're requiring the application as a means of evidencing that a transfer has taken place, I think it's fine. If I, as a non-attorney, am reading this incorrectly, and it's conflating sale price and the collection of the transfer fee with the assessed value or the taxes collected, then I think we've got a problem. with the assessed value or the taxes collected, then I think we've got a problem.
So if we take out residential, take out the word residential, does that fix it?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking is just that this contemplates future exemptions that we might want to put in place, as Select Board Member Heller was talking about last week. And that that's why that language would be in here, but the residential exemption confuses it with something that, something very quite different.
So just make sure I understand. The residential exemption referred to here is the exemption that people file with the town to get, to take a certain amount of money out of the tax base. Is that right?
No, that's not, this is, it's really not a residential exemption. It's exempt property, for example, transfers to a nonprofit, right, or transfers to a governmental entity. I mean, those are the exemptions I think they should be talking about because it's either you pay the fee or you have an exemption from paying the fee, and that has nothing to do with residential exemption.
I mean, don't forget, we do have this provision in Section 4 that provides the town with the ability to adopt.
Thank you.
Requirements, exemptions, regulations, so.
And that's what that language was intended for, to get at your concern, but to do it in a.
Could you let the board deliberate on this?
But if I wrote it and you seem confused.
You jumped up and started talking.
I'm sorry. I just want to provide some clarification.
So we take out the word residential there, then it makes, then you're saying it makes more sense?
If Ms. Brown wrote the language, I'm curious to know what her intention writing it was and.
Okay, my concern is people jumping out and going to the podium while we're in the middle of discussion makes the meeting less than organized. But go ahead, since you've been asked by Select Board Member Franco.
I think you need to take under Section 1C. Under Section 1C, if I'm looking at the right version, I don't think that residential belongs in there.
It's been taken out. Yeah, it's been taken out.
Okay. And I was trying to find the language that actually, there was a separate section under the actual warrant article that provided language that said that Select Board would come up with exemptions in keeping with what Select Board Member Heller described, and I think that all of us have described at some point in time.
So in regards to 2B, should we strike the word residential?
Strike the whole thing.
It just reads exemption. Should we strike all of 2B?
See, I think I have a different version.
Okay.
I think all it's saying is when you apply that you should include a signed letter indicating whether or not you intend to seek an exemption, and I assume why.
As evidence that a sale, a transfer of the ownership of the property is.
Yeah, I think it's just as part of it, just accompanied by including this additional letter. I think folks were confused and rightfully by the term residential being in there. I think that's what confused folks.
Yeah.
Okay, so then go to Number C. "The basis, if any, upon which the transfer or one or both of the parties to the transfer is claimed to be exempt in whole or in part from said fee."
That's the rationale for why you believe you qualify for exemption.
But basis is a slippery word to use in a, in a piece of legislation dealing with real estate, because basis, cost basis, has to do with how much you paid for the property. And it could be confusing, and people shorten that all the time to the word basis.
Unless you can say another word. I mean, in the context of the sentence, I don't think that we'd talk, anyone can confuse that with tax basis. But, I mean, is there another word for basis? If I had my computer, I could go to my thesaurus. Oh, I have my phone. That's a computer.
I mean, you could always identify these issues and ask our legal counsel to modify the language if necessary.
Well, you could say the justification.
Reason, okay. And that's a short word, too. You want to change it to reason?
Sure.
Okay, okay. So let's move on. It's just one extra letter. Okay, let's see. All in favor? Are we ready to vote? Okay. "I move approval of the filing of a bill to authorize a real estate transfer tax in accordance with the town meeting vote under Article 9 of the Fall 2019 special town meeting. All in favor? Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay.
Basis to reasons is.
Okay, finally.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Point of order, I believe, is appropriate for your vote on Number 18. The, I believe, the vote about Harvest Street is to mass housing partnership. Both the agenda says mass housing finance, and when you articulated the wording of the vote, you also referred to MHFA. And Allison is very clear that it's not a joint partnership, it's strictly the mass housing partnership. So may I suggest that you take a second vote, alter the wording that you verbalized when you voted?
Okay, so instead of mass housing finance, it should be mass.
It should be mass housing partnership.
MHP.
According to Allison.
Okay.
And I had asked her, was there a joint, you know, deal, and she said no.
Okay, so I move reconsideration of Item 18. I assume no one objects. And I call for the approval of comments to the application that was submitted by, submitted with respect to 209 Harvard Development LLC to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership in accordance with Massachusetts Journal Law, Chapter 40B. All in favor? Mr. Franco?
Aye.
And Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Fralley. Mr. Castenova-Davis, talk to us about objectives.
Good evening, Justin Castenova-Davis, Assistant Town Administrator.
We voted when you were out.
Sorry. Coming here before you to hopefully have the Select Board approve fiscal year '21 Select Board objectives. Just wanted to bring it in context a little bit. In your packet, you should have a memo and a list of objectives. There are about 20 objectives. Largely has the same format that the Select Board approved last year. You'll notice that it's a little bit streamlined. Last year, we had like 46 objectives. And the reason behind that is because, one, we've had over the past couple of years through the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award Program, we've had reviewers recommend that we revisit our Select Board objectives. They were considered too wordy. There was too many. It was impossible for readers to really understand and to have a concise message about overall overarching goals for the town. As well as advisory committee members, last year, they recommended that we relook at Select Board objectives. So we've taken a first pass at trying to reduce some of those objectives. I think this is a good first step in trying to get an overall change in our objectives. It's something that we'll have to do over time, but we should probably look to streamline it even further and allow us to improve our performance indicators. But I'm here to discuss these objectives and.
Last year, we actually did a lot of the consolidation also, so.
Yep.
You know, and you're taking it one step further. I appreciate that. Any comments, questions?
I do appreciate your consolidation of these and putting them into, I'm sorry, you can't hear me?
Oh, no, I understand.
Okay, I'll speak as loudly as I can. Putting them into categories that make sense, so it's easy to find. And I'm focused on the category, the last category, on environmental planning. And most of these objectives talk about our municipal buildings, different portfolios, fleets for town departments, sustainability goals in municipal projects, and gas leaks, which I'm also appreciative of. I have another suggestion, which is that we urge the planning board to work with developers to focus on sustainable goals in the developments that they are proposing. Now, that's partly the, you know, that mirrors the goal of Article 21, fossil fuel-free buildings and major renovations. But I think the planning board, it would be, first of all, that's in the governmental process now, so we have no idea how long that will take. So I think it would be us to urge our own planning board, I think they've been doing this actually, but to urge them to work with developers to focus on renewable energy projects and lessening the impact of carbon emissions in the developments that they are proposing.
That's a great idea.
And also with respect to Item 18, you talk about electric and alternative vehicles. I'm not sure what that means. I think what you're saying is for vehicles using other fossil fuel-free technologies, right?
Sure, we could change the language. Sort of alternative vehicles, not just electric, plug-in hybrids, as we develop that infrastructure and technology in the town. Yep, we can.
Do hydrogen-powered vehicles count in that?
Solar-powered vehicles? Why, there is an airplane.
I would not fly a net, I'll tell you.
More micro-mobility options. Care Bruton takes a scooter, at least when it was available during the scooter pilot program.
So I want to thank you for doing this consolidation, and it's now so much cleaner than it was in the past. I'm really hesitant to make any comments because I'm going to make it a mess again. I'm focused at the other end of the document, rather than the last section. I'm focused on the first section. And something I don't see here is reference to succession planning. And I think there have been a number of key town staff members who have retired in recent memory. We, earlier in this meeting, heard from two, or heard about two, who were retiring, and I think that's something that this board should be thinking about. How do we, how do we make sure that we're capturing the institutional knowledge as people rightfully move on to the next step of their career? Or the next step of their life, as the case may be.
And also, you know, how do we set in place structures to be able to anticipate people leaving? And be able to make sure that there are people coming up through the pipeline who can either on a temporary or a permanent basis take over when people leave.
And luckily, Ben, we had language about succession planning in previous objectives, so we can incorporate that pretty easily into the document.
I'm sorry for making you break out something that you.
Yeah, no problem. I just didn't want to revisit the same objectives over and over. It's part, you know, but that's overarching goal. I think that's a good goal and be part of our streamlining even further, I think, is an important goal.
And since we don't, haven't really done anything about that objective, you know, maybe this is going to nudge us into.
Yep.
Coming up with, you know, some action plans.
I think we have some things in regards to succession planning. I think it's a continual process.
Yeah, fair enough.
Are you going to come back to us again now at least, or are we going to vote on this tonight?
Ideally, I'd like for you to vote on it tonight. I can incorporate changes. We're pressing printing budget deadlines here, so our printing deadline. If you guys have suggestions, we could try and incorporate now or forward along.
I can offer some thoughts and we'll see what makes it in the, to the final cut. So now I'm focused on the second body, diversity. Someone else is going to have to take economic, well, actually, I have one for that, too. But Item 9, so this is a simple one that I have, like, something, so one of the things I like most about this is that by and large, these are very specific. Like, not in diversity and community engagement, but elsewhere, they're very specific. This is what, like, 6 through 10, I feel like are a little bit more, I don't know, not as specific. One quick change I would make is under 9, I would just strike where possible. I mean, because the, otherwise it would read to implement diversity and inclusion efforts into the town services, planning and procurement processes. So they are efforts, and so I think we can always make efforts. So I don't know that where possible is necessary there, so I'm actually taking out words, which is.
No, I think that's a good point.
The other thing that I think would be something very specific in here is somehow the board successfully shepherding, working with the CDICR to shepherd this new racial equity advancement fund into being, sort of to birth this thing and make sure that, you know, that we get it up and running and, you know, all that that encapsulates. I don't know, somehow put that into words that would make more sense than I just did right now. That's the one thing that I would try to see if we can work into there, because it's, that's the thing I like about it. Everything else is so specific. That would be something very specific that we could do this coming year. And then the other one, I don't know if this is just, you know, too politically fraught or what, but Number 11, under Economic Development Planning and Regulation, it just says to update the zoning bylaws. And so I don't know if that's just like, that one just seems more like either it's their maintenance or this is coming from somewhere where we've got a real problem that we're trying to wrap our heads around. And it's just, everything else is a little bit more clear and that one doesn't have a lot of clarity to it.
I think the planning department is undergoing, they call it a codification?
Yes.
Recodification.
Yeah, recodification.
Because I guess there's, you know, stuff is stuck in different places.
It's a first step to.
And they need to make things clearer, and then we can understand where we have issues in the zoning bylaws. But right now, because stuff is scattered in different places, is that?
Yeah, no, Select Board Member Heller has that correct. It's also, that language was actually decided by the Select Board last year as part of the objectives, but also in congruence with the planning board. We thought simpler was better because we weren't sure where we were going with it. We could probably do a recodification if you want, say, to review the recodification of zoning bylaws.
Right, I would be more specific, and I know we're trying to get simpler, but I think that'd be helpful. Someone looking at this on their own with no context might think, well, what do they have planned? What has this board got in mind? Are they trying to pull one over? What's going on here? So, and we obviously, but to make that clear, I think would be helpful.
So, I think to add to that, you know, and I'm not sure how you would word this, but we want to make sure that the zoning, that the recodification of the zoning code not only goes forward and makes it easier to read, et cetera, but also addresses some of the other town objectives. I mean, for example, affordable housing being one of them. I don't think we should put specific examples in, but other town needs and objectives.
Well, so my understanding is recodification is the first step in a, I think, at least a two-step process. And recodification isn't intended to make any changes to the zoning bylaw beyond eliminating internal conflicts and conflicts with state law.
Organization.
It's sort of a cleanup. And then the second part is the conversation, yeah, the conversation, community conversation about, does the zoning bylaw say what we want it to say?
So we have a consultant, as I understand, and that consultant is looking at substantive changes in addition to, you know, recodification. you know, which would be implemented, you know, much further down the road, you know, through town meeting vote. But I just want to make, I mean, my concern is that we're clear about, you know, the fact that we want to make sure our zoning is consistent with our other objectives in town. So you figure out how to do that.
Yeah, no, I have an understanding of what you're looking for there.
Could I ask you to also, in the comment I made before, about environmental, it's not only the zoning, it's the zoning board and the planning staff. I mean, the planning board and the staff. Because the staff does a lot of work with the developers.
I think we can definitely incorporate those changes. I put notes here, and I gladly and easily add those to the Select Board objectives, so with those changes...
Okay, could I suggest one other thing? Item number four, I mean, our great assistant here, Devin Williams, is actually working on this. So what I'd like to, you know, say here is, complete the review and update the boards and commissions' applications, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we've got to come to a conclusion on that. Because I think that's been in there for a few years.
So you're just adding the word "complete."
Right, complete the review and update of...
Let's vote. Go.
Anything else? Okay, I move approval of the 2015 fiscal year 2021 Select Board Budget Objectives, as amended in this meeting. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay, that's it. Nothing else on the agenda. We're adjourned.